The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
All right, I'd like to call the special board meeting to order. Now I'll ask to entertain the first motion.
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 prun 1 prun E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit, after-school programming contracts pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 prun 1 prun G conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved to wit potential litigation matters and pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 prun 1 prun C considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 prun 1 prun F considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where par prun B applies which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Any person referred, oh, to wit, emeritus, break in service, staff investigations, and safety and well-being of staff. Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy?
Sheldon? Sitnikoff? Lauren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Carried 6-0. Go across the hall.
Is Eric coming?
Yes. All right, Katie, you want to read the motion to take us into the board meeting?
I move that the board reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.85 prun 2 Wisconsin statutes to consider the balance of the agenda.
All right, so we're -- thanks, Katie. We're currently in our special board meeting. I would entertain the first motion.
I move that the resignations as presented be approved.
Second. Sandy?
I'm gonna do a second and a vote on reconvening.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I forgot about that. Need a second on the reconvening motion. Sandy, vote on that first. Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoys?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. And then, once we have the motion.
Okay. I again move that the resignations as presented be approved.
Second. Sandy?
McCoys?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the retirements as presented be approved.
Second. Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoys?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the termination as presented be approved.
Second. Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoys?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the employment of Peter Ross as chief operations officer, 12 months at the district office building at a salary of $145,516, prorated to $70,519, 2018-19 rate, 2019-20 step, effective January 2nd, 2020, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Brenda?
Can we have some just transparency and clarification around this position in general? If it's restructuring or what's going on with it?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'd be happy to share that. This is a restructure for part of flattening the organization. We are not hiring a chief human resource officer to replace Jean Marsh. We are not hiring a chief technology information officer, and we are not hiring a chief financial officer. This person will have oversight of those three areas as well and provide that. It's a one umbrella over those areas to be able to lead those areas. I think one of the pieces that's really important is that this person also has the licensure that's needed for a business license, which is part of the chief financial officer, as well as can provide the leadership around technology, provide the leadership as well in the finance area, and also in facilities as well as we move forward. So it's intended to do some broader oversight. Procurement will be under there as well, some of those important parts of that. We will have executive directors in those departments, but we won't have the chiefs and the number of chiefs that we've had in the past.
Thank you. Thank you. Sandy?
McCoys?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the employment of Diana Del Becky as community school resource coordinator, 11 months at the district office building at a salary of $46,021, to be prorated based on a mutually agreeable start date, 2018-19 salary, 2019-20 step, as presented, be approved.
Second. Sandy?
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoys?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the transfers of staff as presented be approved.
Second. Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoys?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the -- is he here?
No.
Is Diana here?
No.
I can't see the podiums in the way. I move that the transfer of Timothy Larson, social studies teacher at Purple High School, 191 days at a salary of $58,177, to associate principal at Lombardi Middle School, 11 months at a salary of $84,923, effective August 1st, 2019, as presented, be approved.
Second. Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoys?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. I understand Tim is right there. There you go. Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I move that the salary adjustment for Sarah Jansen, principal Head Start Director, AKA Sally, 12 months at Head Start Learning Center from salary of $103,415 to a salary of $108,615, effective July 1st, 2019, as presented, be approved.
Second. Sandy?
McCoys?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that IEI general contractors be awarded the bid for referendum project work at Red Smith K8 School in the amount of $2,349,316, as presented, be approved.
Second. Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoys?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that Dell Technologies be awarded for the bid for computer monitors in the amount of $53,970, as presented, be approved.
Uh, second. Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoys?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that CDW-G be awarded the bid for Windows desktops in the amount of $519,000, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Brenda? Can we just clarify how, I mean, how many as far as like the amount of desktops we're talking about, how many schools we're looking at?
Diane?
I have Diane Dush, chief technology.
And I will call Joshua Kaczak as well, our director of technology. So your question was how many, and explain where these will be placed? Okay? Josh?
Yeah, this will be for 600 total units. These will be placed at the secondary business ed and tech ed labs. These are project certified, project lead the way certified machines, spec to run really high-end applications like your AutoCAD and things like that. We'll be repurposing the existing machines where we can and sending those down into some lower leverage situations.
Okay. How, like, what's the age of the existing?
It depends. At middle school, on the tech ed side, I believe those are eight years old. Diane, the HPZ stations, I think were bought in your first year?
Yes. Yep, old with the square monitors and very.
Yeah, so those are six, seven?
Yes, Z machines.
What's the shelf life of the 600, would you say?
I'd be expecting to get four to five years out of them.
How many?
Four to five years out of them in the tech ed labs and the business ed labs. After that, they can be used elsewhere.
Again, these require more horsepower.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
Should we wait until the last round?
Sheldon?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
McCoys?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Thanks.
I move that technology resource advisors, TRA, be awarded the bid for Chromebooks with warranty in the amount of $328,000, as presented, be approved.
Second.
They stay around for any other questions.
No other questions? All right. Sandy?
McCoys?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes. I move to adjourn this portion.
All in favor, or is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning the special board meeting?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move right into our teaching and learning work session. Before I do that, I will let, remind members of the public that if you want to view the board agenda and handouts for this meeting, as well as meetings, minutes from past meetings, you can visit the district website at www.gbaps.org, click on our district, and then Board of Education. On the left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. Also, we will have, provide our community with two different opportunities during tonight's meeting to speak before the board. The first opportunity is during our open forum. The second opportunity is during agenda items where indicated by public comment on our agenda. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are either posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting laws prohibit the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board will also permit public comment during agenda items as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. The process for speaking during our agenda items is as follows. The board will first hear the presentation and discuss the agenda item before calling on those who desire to speak. If you'd like to speak during a specific agenda item, please fill out a form and give it to Sandy at the end of the table at any point during the meeting. If you desire to speak and haven't yet filled out a form, you can indicate to Sandy that you'd like to speak and fill out a form afterwards. Sandy will provide the names of those wishing to speak to the board member conducting that part of the meeting, and you will be called upon to speak at the appropriate time. Please keep your comments to five minutes. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members are prohibited. Also, I'd like to indicate that we have all seven board members present tonight. We're also joined at the table by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld to my left, our superintendent, Sandy Heller, who's our board secretary, and our intercity student council members, Jamie Barbian, who's our outgoing president. Is this your last meeting? Oh, it is. You're not coming in two weeks.
New grad.
Yes, and congratulations. Jamie was, is, from West High School, is our outgoing president for intercity student council and a recent graduate. And our -- And our incoming president is from Southwest High School, Luke Pizzani, so welcome, Luke. So we do have two people who would like to speak before the board. I'll call them up in the order received. The first one is Betty Kosick.
I live at 2346 Browning Road, and I'm speaking for myself. I just have a couple requests. We heard from Michelle Langenfeld just now that, about the changes in the administrative positions, and I, that's what my request is about, because you approved the administrative salaries in February, and I'm assuming that there have been maybe changes since then, obviously, and we know of a couple. So if you could give us an update on that at some later time, how much, it doesn't have to be how much we're saving, but how many, if there's any more positions that we've eliminated, or, because obviously, we know that we need to save money. And then the second request is, now it's leaving my head, oh dear. Eh, I forgot. Hope to come back.
You'll come back, too.
Okay, thank you.
We have two more people that --
That's what happens when you don't make notes.
We have two more people that are speaking, so if you remember, then we'll have you come back up.
She'll sit down and it'll come right back.
Yeah, it'll come right back to her as soon as she sits. Jamie Barbian is next.
Hi, my name is Jamie Barbian, and I live at 1265 Denoyers Street, Green Bay, 54303. I'm a recent graduate, as of yesterday evening, of Green Bay West High School, the former president of ICSC, and an international baccalaureate diploma program candidate. I'm here to talk today about the IB program funding. The IB program at West is a strong academic magnet that brings people to the school that is regularly referred to as the ghetto school. This program gives strength to our students and staff that when saying they work at or attend West are met with comments of disgust or concerns for safety. It gives them a rebuttal about just how academically strong West High School is, and I can say that without a doubt. The IB has made West High School a well-rounded, internationally-minded, and academically accelerated school regardless of what standardized testing reports. However, to keep West on this upward trend and afford these benefits to students for generations to come, we need to support this program. West High is a school with high poverty and in turn, high free and reduced rates. In an effort to provide equity for all students, those that qualify for free or reduced have their testing fees covered. This money comes from the IB budget. With this growing program, this number is increasing. We aren't talking about just a few hundred dollars, we're talking about more than a thousand. For one IB test, a student must pay a registration and a testing fee, making this test around $300. For me, a full diploma student, I paid around $900 to test. With these high rates and many of our certificate students testing in at least two courses, our budget is quickly depleted in an effort to support all students' academic endeavors. Additionally, professional development and certifications are essential in this program due to IP's frequent curriculum changes, with IB putting out new curriculum for each subject every seven years. These trainings and certifications often take place in areas of the United States that must be flown to, such as California or Louisiana, and the fees for attending the program, which average around $800 per participant, as well as flights, are covered by the IB budget. These essential expenses leave very little room for any other spending to improve the experience of the program. Particularly, I have an interest in the effects of this on our full diploma candidates. Within the full diploma program, CAS or Creativity Action and Service must be documented and submitted to the IB for review, along with a CAS project, which is best described as a service project that the student has planned, collaborated with others on, and executed. This is a requirement to receive the IB diploma, and not properly performing in this category removes the ability to receive the diploma. However, due to our limited budget, there is very little funding left over to support this. I'd like to share a few examples of how this has impacted just this year's IB diploma candidates. One student was planning to paint murals in the foreign language hall for her project, but was unable to afford paint without help from the art department. A student who wanted to host a dog washing drive to raise money for a cause was unable to afford the initial costs, such as shampoo. Another student whose project revolved around creating a new organization system for the prop room in the auditorium had to use Drama Club money to afford hangers for her project. As you can see by these few examples, we have very little money left over to support our diploma students, and I believe that if you're going to put an accelerated program in a school, you have to continue to support it. So I'm asking the Board of Education to make West High's IB program a priority and better support to West students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. And next is Joel Dinney.
Thank you. Joel Dinney, 221 Who's Street, apartment 215, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54302. I was gonna actually speak on this during the agenda, but I have some stuff I have to get done at home, so I had to speak now. I'm disheartened, angry, and dismayed at the fact that AIR needs another $286,000. We've spent over $394,000 so far. This is unacceptable. I would not be a good voter or constituent if I didn't say what needs to be said. I called a few of you the last time this was going on. I've talked with you a lot about this. I've also made my comments on the Greater Green Bay Society of the Lama and elsewhere, voicing my displeasure at this, as well as other politically-minded and politically-aware people here in the Greater Green Bay area have also expressed their dismay and anger towards this consulting program. This is a huge waste of money. You could hire two people who just retired out at UWGB for half the price that we're paying these guys out of, what, I think they're based out of Atlanta. They don't care about us. And now it's back. They need more money, like Oliver Twist. Please, sir, can I have some more? I told you this was gonna happen then. Y'all said it wasn't going to. You said, oh, we need a needs assessment done. Okay, great. We could've done that on our own. We have, we have dozens of people in this district that are making over six-figure salaries a year. You mean to tell me that all those people, all those people couldn't come together and say, hmm, there's a problem at Washington Middle School and other schools in the area? You know, we have all this education, we have PhDs, we have master's degrees. We should be able to figure this stuff out. And if they can't, then they should be fired. Period. I'm sorry, I'm getting angry about this, but this is a waste of money. We just heard hundreds of thousands of dollars of money being used for technology. We've seen hundreds of, we've seen several million dollars for construction, and now you want to take over $600,000 and give it to a company not even here in Wisconsin, but some other out-of-state firm? Because we do not have the brain power in Green Bay, Wisconsin, in the Greater Green Bay area, to come up with solutions? You gotta be kidding me. This is the best we can do? And I think everybody on this board that supports this idea needs to really reexamine. They need to reexamine who they are, who they represent, because it's clear you're not representing the people that got you here. It's clear you're representing someone else. And that's what, that's what upsets me. Just a few minutes ago, hundreds of thousands of dollars being given away, hand over fist. But yet, we have kids that have trouble getting food. We have, we don't have enough social workers in our schools. We don't have enough mental health professionals in our schools. That's how you fix Washington. You get a few school social workers in there full-time, several, not just one that floats around to different schools, but you hire several. And you could've done that for this amount of money. You could pay them about 60 grand a year, starting, maybe about 50. I just graduated with my MSW, non-school social work, but 45, 50 a year is pretty good starting wage for someone with a master's degree. They could've come in here and they could've helped fix this stuff. We have access to a bunch of different peer-reviewed articles and research and all sorts of things, but you didn't do that. We had, we have several interns in the MSW program that intern with GBAPS. No one ever asked them for their opinions on these things. How do we fix things? But yet, in our classrooms, every Monday, for, every other Monday for seminar, there were school social workers complaining about the issues that were happening in our schools. That's great that we heard it, as students. Isn't that great that their concerns are falling on deaf ears? And that's why I'm up here tonight. Because you need to hear it again, and again, and again. You work for us, not yourselves. You work for us. And that's what needs to be said, and that's why I'm saying it. That's all I've gotta say now. Have a good night.
Thank you, Joel. Oh, Betty remembered. Do I need to give my name again? No, go ahead, Betty.
I just wanted on record that there were 99 administrators this year, and there were 140, no, 104 on the list for next year. So just the numbers, all we need. I mean, I don't need money or whatever, if you do report back. And then, could you also tell us if the administrators and managers are going to be included in[1668.62] And then could you also tell us if the administrators and managers are going to be included in the out-of-pocket changes and the deductible changes that were approved for the staff too? Will they be included in that?
They have health insurance, you mean?
Yeah, the health insurance.
Yeah. And the hundred and four number is from what year?
That's next year, nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty?
Yes, I have the list at home.
Twenty twenty, you mean?
Well, starting nineteen to twenty. You approved it in February.
Well, we have to, we can't.
Yeah, so I think we can get that information. I know it's not in central based on what we're doing here, so that's the piece.
There might be changes, that's just all we're wondering about.
Yep, yep, I think it's very fair. I think we can, we publish that for anyone to look at.
Sure, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Betty. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before the board? Seeing done, we'll move to our discussion items, or to Teaching and Learning Work Session that will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Rhonda. We will start with a couple of discussion items. First one, board meeting dates.
That one I put on here, we have a July eleventh retreat that we scheduled the last time we were here, and I know you may or may not.
I'm good, I can be here.
You're good, okay.
Yep.
So we will keep that then, that makes that easy. There wasn't anything else, right? July eleventh, right? Yeah.
And that was the eight thirty to four thirty?
That still works?
All day.
Eight thirty to four.
I can be here now.
Eight thirty to four?
Great, okay, good. And then the next one is a discussion about work group meetings. I've heard from a number of board meetings and also the district office administrators that they're hoping we can go back to having those work group meetings ahead of board meetings. So like the teaching and learning would be Katie and Eric meeting the week before your work session with John and Vicki. And same with operational support and also monitoring reports, which is Laura and Rhonda. And I was attending those at one point. And then the other question is the, we also had the behavior work group, whether we want to start that back up again.
Culture and climate?
Culture and climate, yeah, sorry, I always forget what that's called. Culture and climate work group. And so the, the, we stopped doing them at, when there was question about posting meetings, we were thinking that people could ask their questions individually, but now it looks like it would be easier for everybody to have those scheduled meetings. We would need to post them, and the posting would have to be a detailed agenda like we do for board meetings, so exactly what would be covered at each of those meetings, which would mean that when you're at the meeting, you can't stray from what the agenda is. It also means that once it's scheduled, it can't be just, you know, rescheduled because I can't make it, can be rescheduled for a half hour later kind of thing. So it would have to be pretty strict in terms of that. And, 'cause I know that, I was talking to Sandy today about posting, and you know, you post at least four, in order to make the paper, you post how many days ahead of time?
In order to make, like on a Friday, I send it out and it gets in Saturday or Sunday's paper.
Okay.
So the paper needs a couple of days.
Couple of days. So when we, you know, you can repost, but, but if you're reposting less than forty-eight hours.
Twenty-four.
Well, no, if you're posting close to that twenty-four hour requirement, it doesn't make the paper, which then causes, then what do you have to do when it doesn't make the paper? I can't remember.
Then I have to get it to the City of Green Bay and Brown County Library to post in their front entrances.
Okay. So anyway, just to give board members a general sense of when we're reposting, and also it, it costs money every time we post. So if we post a meeting and then repost it, it's, it's.
Costs money, how?
Extra money.
Is it a hun-?
We have to pay people.
For the newspaper.
The newspaper to post, yeah.
But you, you also have to pay when you have the library posted?
No.
Okay, just the newspaper.
Just the newspaper.
So you can do the library if you miss the deadline for the newspaper?
Yeah, because we need to have it posted done in three locations.
If it misses the newspaper, it has to go to three places.
Can you just go to those three locations right off the bat, or no? Does that not work?
Instead of the paper.
Instead of the paper?
Yep.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We've, Melissa just said we've designated the paper as our official posting.
Right.
Okay.
So people know where to look for it.
In the past, though, these work meetings, they were standard, and it was the same time every month, the same, the same date.
Tried to be, tried to be, except, you know, people's schedules and things, and, you know, generally, they're scheduled for a certain time and they happen at that time.
Okay.
So again, if you know, you know, two weeks ahead of time that you can't make your meeting, you know, then that's reasonable to repost, but if it's two days, you know, the day before, if it's less than twenty-four hours, there's no option to repost at all. If it's, if it's close to that twenty-four hours, then it's, requires posting it in three places and things like that. Rhonda?
So then, and I can appreciate that, but the nature of my job is, it's very fluid. I can literally find out the night before that I have a, a shoot that I have to work on, and I'm gonna take that job.
Right, so then you just wouldn't be able to attend the meeting because it's posted, yeah.
But I'm just saying, if it's, you know, I'm hearing that it's a matter of, it seems like it's kind of a hardship to reschedule, and there's a financial aspect of it. I'm just saying, I'm not sitting here tonight committing to that, 'cause I just can't.
To being.
And what has happened in the past is we've participated remotely, if that's an option.
It's never an option.
And if that's not an option.
It's never an option, because I'm.
You're either working or you're not.
Well, when I'm working, I'm, they're recording something, or I'm with, I'm with someone, so there's just no way around it.
So then what we have done in the past is you touch base with one of the, either John or depending on who your group meets with, touch base with them later, and they'll fill you in on everything we've discussed. The benefit of these meetings is that we're more informed before we come to the board table. And I personally have missed it terribly since we've stopped doing it. I just think there, it's one more chance to, to get information and to clarify things before we get to the tables, that we can have a more succinct discussion at the table.
Andrew?
I'd be interested in hearing, and I'm all, you know, I'm all for, and I've advocated for more, you know, more video, more visibility. These work group meetings were always by design to board members and designed to, you know, take care of some nuts and bolts questions. They don't, they don't make policy, they don't.
No.
So I'm just, I'm just curious as to why they, why they need to be posted, and then why wouldn't everything that contains a board member need to be posted?
There was actually a change in the law, so.
Hi. The Wisconsin Supreme Court in the Krieger versus Appleton School District decision clarified when meetings need to be posted, and particularly where there is a committee or a board policy that sets up work groups, that is an official function of the school board, and therefore those are official committees of the group. So it's not just about how many indivi, and I did do a legal update for the board on that decision when it happened at the time, so you could probably, I can resend you that memo. It's not just about a numbers test, it's about the purpose as well. And the purpose of those work groups is to do the work of the board, and therefore they need to be posted.
So the committee is signed, and I, that was a good legal update, and I guess maybe I read it a little too, too quick, but I'm, I know that if it has any, if, if a committee is tasked with any authority, then for sure, but even if a committee has no authority, has delegated no authority on its own, it still falls under this decision?
You've created those committees as a function of the school board, and they're in school board policy, they're in your, the one hundred series policies, therefore they need to be posted.
Okay.
Rhonda?
So the meeting that the president and vice president and superintendent has every week is posted as well?
That meeting does not need to be posted. The Supreme, I'm sorry, the Attorney General clarified that those are ministerial duties, those are.
But they're literally creating an agenda.
Correct, yep.
Which will take action on it.
Yep, well, but they're not, they're not taking action, they're creating the agenda for which you will take action on.
But we're also not taking action at committee level as well.
But those are, they're discussing items that will be on your agenda.
But the, they're actually building an agenda when it's the president, vice president, and superintendent.
Correct. I can send you the information related to that.
Well, I'm just wondering, just right now, how that's different.
I don't have it in front of me, but I can send you the specific information, so I don't misquote it for you.
So that meeting is definitely not posted?
The meeting doesn't, the meeting with the superintendent and the board president does not need to be posted.
Do other districts post those meetings?
No, they do not.
They do not.
Thank you. Any other questions on?
Nope. When we discussed it, we would hope to start in the fall, if that works. I mean, I, we thought that we could maybe get a more standard dates and things to.
Sure.
With summer schedules, it might be a little more challenging.
Can I just, sorry, now we said this right when we started, there's three work groups, teaching and learning, organizational support, and culture and climate, are those?
Monitoring.
And monitoring.
Thank you, Melissa.
And we would have two people on each one, is that what we were thinking?
We can have up to three, right, Melissa? At these meetings?
As many as you want. Right.
Yeah.
And we would, so anyone could be on one or as many as they want, essentially because of that. Eric, you said you want to be on all four?
No, that's not, that's.
Oh, sorry.
Someone hypothetically be on all four.
So right now, it's officially, the teaching and learning is Eric and Katie, Laura and Rhonda are monitoring reports, Christina and Andrew are organizational support. I was going, and I was on monitoring reports also, and then the culture and climate work group was Katie and Laura.
Yeah.
So.
And Ed.
And Ed, but yeah. So if there's an interest in, in being a third on that, Christina wants to do culture and climate, okay. So I, I guess each of those work groups will have to work with their respective, the people that, the administrators that, that are at those meetings to determine time and then let Sandy know posting.
Right, that's what we've done historically.
Is there?
Vicki.
And is, is there a reason we wouldn't do them this summer? Schedules, agendas.
It might be good to start in, in August.
You mean your schedules, like?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right, vacations and things.
Yes.
So we could maybe start in August? Okay.
Yeah, probably.
All right, that sounds good.
I, I just want to say that, I mean, I'm like Katie, I've kind of been missing these as well, having that upfront opportunity to sort of say, you know, can you expand more on this at our meeting? Can you, you know, include this in our meeting? Katie was always really good at saying, you know, I think maybe we should have more of this or less of this or whatever, just kind of flesh it out a little bit to kind of anticipate what people might want to hear. And I mean, it's not a huge thing, but it, it did distill sometimes what, what we were going to talk about, and that was helpful. So.
As a follow-up to that, what it really helped for us was define the work. And I think that that's an important part of, of moving forward, is a shared understanding of the work, and, and that really helped us as well.
And then I think that the spacing of those were usually between the work session and the board meeting, right?
No, it was before the work session.
Before.
Because it enabled us to take a look at the agenda in draft form.
Okay.
And to respond, ask questions, ask for more information, or say, too much information or whatever, just to kind of have the conversation about it, and you come to the table with a better background. It just is, I think they're very effective.
Especially if you're going to have shorter meetings.
You know, it's just good for relationship building and.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, I think the information sharing is important, but just seeing each other.
Right.
Aside from being here, it will help to create stronger binds in as we move towards the facilitation.
Administration, yes, so. And the two-person specification is in terms of facilitating these meetings, like Eric will, you know, once you're comfortable, we will alternate facilitating the meetings, just like you will alternate with Andrew facilitating the operational, and you can alternate with Laura facilitating the monitoring report. That's the intent of the two people assigned to each of those three. And then we don't really specifically report out on culture and climate, is that it? Culture and climate? But that's the, more the structural piece. Okay? All right, so then that's the work. So now we'll get into the discussion and, okay, public comment pieces, and I'll begin with the course essential documents and resources for world language, Spanish, and French. We're joined at the table by John Magus, unless he's leaving the room.
Katie, because this, this is public comment, does that mean that that's public comment, 'cause it's after the work groups, that would be public comment about the work group, but not about the coursework?
Dean, they can hardly hear me.
That's you, Katie, Laura, and Kylie, Michelle, and Rhonda.
Those are the only ones who've been, there we go, thank you, Dean. Can you hear me now, Betty? Thank you.
Can you hear me now? No. Is mine on?
He's trying to put him on one at a time, so we don't all talk at once.
She's just glad we don't have a bunch of background.
Okay. Oh, there we go, I'm on. Now you can turn me off.
They're all on, but everybody's talking the same thing.
Oh, okay.
You're saying it's us?
Yes, it's blaming us. See how it is?
All right, again, world language, Spanish, and French.
There we go.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Did you have anything you needed to share?
Yes, I just wanted to say that we appreciate the time for the board to consider these course essential documents. There are a number of subject areas that we'll be addressing. The first one is related to world language, Spanish and French, and part of the reason why I wanted to address this separately is there have been a number of concerns that have been, that have come during public session or public forum related to our backing of French, and I just wanted to show that partially through, through this process, that we're continuing to review and revise our documents and provide support for all of the languages. All of the languages are important to us, and it's based on course enrollment, but the work we're bringing forward here is really a summary of the, the work to date around making sure that those world language courses are vital, engaging, and serving the needs of our students.
And this evening, Dr. Khan will be here presenting first on the Spanish and French courses, which reflect curriculum updates to existing courses. He's gonna summarize the work that we've completed this year in order to support an updated and logical progression of learning for students who are seeking college readiness and beyond in these elective areas. And then I won't jump back in for the Chinese five, which will come next after this, but that's, that's presented separately tonight because it is a new course curriculum, so that we can expand our progression of Chinese to a fifth level as well. As you get started, I do want to thank Dr. Khan, as well as all the principals and the staff who have participated in the process. It's not an easy task, and their dedication to the work is very much appreciated. Dr. Khan?
Thank you. Thanks. So the world language curricular updates that we're bringing forward tonight reflect a continuation of the work we began last year. Last year, the Spanish departments updated the Spanish one through Spanish four courses. Tonight's proposal updates the remaining Spanish courses, as well as the French one through French four courses. So there's three elements to the proposal of the updates. The first one is to divide the current Spanish five course into two courses, and this actually reflects existing practices between our high schools and just puts them in more of a, a specific way. Both courses are aligned to the same standards, but the, these courses are identified as literature, language literature courses, and so they, the literary resources used in them will reflect the students' differing levels of literacy. So the intro to Spanish language literature will be offered for students in ninth and tenth grade who take this course after Spanish four at West High School as part of the, that school's requirements for the IB middle years program. The other course, the survey of Spanish literature, will be offered for students in eleventh and twelfth grade, preparing them for college-level literary analysis. Second, advanced placement Spanish, there are no curricular changes to the course, but the proposal is to offer this course as a dual-credit course with UW Green Bay's Spanish two oh two, fourth semester Spanish. And then finally, the proposed updates to French one through French four will align these French courses to the exact same learning outcomes as was approved for the Spanish one through Spanish four courses last year, so all of French and Spanish will be meeting the same, learning outcomes at the same levels. The curriculum will continue to identify students' language development in the reading, writing, speaking, listening, as well as the study of multiple French-speaking cultures. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Rhonda? So just, so I understand clearly, both of the, the two different courses that used to be Spanish five are both year-long courses?
Correct.
They're just geared toward the different levels?
Right, yeah, what we were finding is the, the, West was needing to do it to meet the ninth and tenth grade levels differed from the other three schools.
And then the AP Spanish class, can that be taken without taking Spanish five?
Correct.
Yeah.
Spanish four is the official prerequisite for, for students who are looking for a capstone experience, Spanish five would be in, in between one. And that's one of the reasons for renaming of Spanish five, is the way it was numbered previously, it implied that Spanish five was the next level of language development when it really was a literature course.
Right, right.
And the next level of language development was actually AP.
And then for, because for students that aren't in IB track, the highest they get in their, in their language is they finish four at the end of their junior year.
They, if they've taken.
And so that's why I asked the question.
Yes.
Can you take either AP or the, the inter, or the survey of Spanish language literature, because they could take both, or they could take one or the other as seniors?
Correct, depending on what school they're at, yes.
Yeah, right.
Jamie?
So I, I believe at West, what's been happening for Spanish five is it's offered, it's just in conjunction with a IB Spanish one class, so you're still able to move forward, you don't have to test, you can take it your senior year, it's just within the IB Spanish It's just within the IB Spanish year one class, just so everyone knows that.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Any other questions? Just a quick one. Where does it, the dual credit with UW GB, is that then like a three or four credit course at GB? What is the?
This one, their fourth semester, is three credits, I believe. I would have to go back and check on the exact number, but it's three or four, I just can't remember which one. Between this and Chinese, one of them is three, one of them is four.
Okay. And then would this still put our students in a position, because you can, as I recall, take an upper-level language class at one of the colleges? And then get several credits, if you pass that successfully, you get several credits in that foreign language? We still have that in place?
Correct, and this actually formalizes that process. So a student who takes AP, they're only taking the test. A student who is in the dual-credit course and decides to take it for UW GB credit, if they earn a B or higher in the class, not only do they earn the credit for the fourth semester, but they will automatically earn the retro credits for third, second, and first semester as well. So they can earn up to, I think it's 13 credits from this one course with a B or higher grade.
Okay, yeah, I remember doing that as a, back in the day. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you. We'll move that forward and go on to world language Chinese five.
Sure, and the proposed Chinese five course is the next offering for students who are currently enrolled in Chinese four. These course outcomes further build on their prior learning as they use and understand the more complex language structures. In addition, this course is proposed to be offered as dual-credit with UW Oshkosh's fourth semester Chinese. Their course number is Chinese 211. And I'm happy to answer questions on that one.
Questions or comments?
Brenda? Since we have very few stu, do we, I assume we have not a lot of students qualified to take Chinese five in our district? Is that?
There aren't, and I'm not sure.
And I'm, so my question is.
I apologize, I don't think my mic is working, but.
So my question is, if we have so few, how do we?
Right. We're currently working on and establishing virtual learning opportunities, so blended classroom environment, thanks to the support of Diane Dershowitz and Technology. So that students in various settings will be able to interact with that, with the Chinese five course. What that allows for is, because we have a number of students exiting from Da Vinci, for example, who are needing Chinese four as freshmen, Chinese five now, that they will be able to take the course without having separate offering for necessarily two students or something like that at one particular site. So it allows us to offer more courses. And I think it'll also allow us, as time goes on, to think about virtual options that would allow us to maybe have integration with cultural elements and focuses from perhaps other countries even. So I think it's a great opportunity for our learners and a great opportunity for us to be able to provide a wide variety of courses and be fiscally responsible.
That was one of my questions. So would it be possible to include in the next update the numbers of students in the Chinese, the various courses? I'd be curious to see what the enrollment actually looks like.
One, two, three?
Yeah, I'd just be, if that's, if it's not a big deal, you could just.
Yep, I'll take note.
Is that okay? Brenda?
So other than Da Vinci, where are the Chinese programs starting out? Are there, is there anything else in elementary?
Just Da Vinci.
Secondary, okay. Okay.
Is that going to grow?
Pardon?
Do you anticipate that changing, John?
Well, I think it's, one thing we're working on now is really the task force to review our efforts as a district in providing world language courses. And that will allow us to take stock of what is our future vision for the district. We have broad, we'll have broad representation on that, on that group. And I think that will be something that we'll be looking at both through the task force. And we've also looked at having some research program evaluation to determine what is the feasibility of offering such a wide variety of languages. As a former world language teacher myself, I'm very, very much a promoter of access to world languages. We also have to be careful, though, to an extent, if we're starting a wide variety of languages from different starting points, and they're all coming together, the tributaries within high school expecting and needing a wide variety of different offer, different offerings, we have to make sure that we're responsible in what we're choosing.
Laura?
When do you anticipate that task force starting their work?
We've been planning for it since last year. We always knew we would run our initial meeting in June, in a couple weeks, actually next week, no. And the purpose of that meeting will be to work with district staff to identify the key questions that we would then bring forward to say, please help us answer these questions. Do we have your approval to pursue these types of questions? So that we could engage in the next step in the process. It's really about defining the questions next week, to be clear. Because we know that there are staffing questions, there are language access questions. Frankly, there are equity questions. Our largest multilingual populations in the district do not all have access to continuing in their home language. And we are lacking in honoring the culture and the language that goes along with the families that we serve in many of the instances. So we are interested in exploring what those questions are that will come out of that group next week.
And who would you like to be on that? Who do you, who do you want to hear from?
We would, well, the, the membership in the initial meeting is folks that, that are connected to, it's district staff. But as a result of the questions that come out of that, it would be up to the next level, whether it be, and I'll defer to my supervisor to help work to determine whether the board would be asked to provide clarity on who should be part of that, or whether the program evaluation process would help determine that. I, that's, I think what.
You're in, you're in the very initial stages right now.
Yes.
But we'll hear about it again soon.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The last time this study was done was approximately five, six years ago, or sorry, seven years ago, actually. 2013, and so that'll be shared as an overview of the group next week to say this is, and some of the folks that'll be present next week were part of that probably seven years ago as well, so.
And actually, it looks like we do have enrollment information on Chinese as well, which we can forward on in email, but I see we do have it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward. And I will discuss Washington Middle School Fine Arts courses.
Dr. Khan will now share with you the results of some of the work that he co-facilitated with the Fine Arts Coordinator, Ms. Brenda Mullard, in support of the continued development of courses and curriculum that is associated with the arts pathway running through Washington Middle School. Dr. Khan?
Okay, switching gears on this one. The Washington Middle School for the Arts started a sixth-grade arts house at the beginning of this school year. Next year, the arts programming is being expanded into seventh grade. The proposal you have is a three-proposed 12-week course rotation, which will allow students in the arts house to, in some cases, build on their learning from sixth grade, and in other cases, to learn about new arts concepts. So there's three courses as part of this proposal. There's the theater, performance, and production, where students continue learning about, develop, continue learning about and developing their acting skills. At the same time, they're introduced to new information related to the technical aspects of theater. The second course, Introduction to Dance, is the first opportunity in the arts programming to offer dance for students. And it provides them a very high-level overview of the basics of dance and learning about multiple dance techniques and working with styles from various global cultural traditions. And the third course, Integrated Visual Art, emphasizes the connect, the connection between the core subject area content as they study different forms of artistic media and artistic processes. And I'm happy to answer questions on these courses.
Brenda?
A couple questions. I assume, so the Intro to Dance is our first foray into teaching dance as part of the Fine Arts.
Correct.
Track. So I assume there, you're, you're thinking ahead in terms of adding it at eighth grade and then doing something at East when those students come? Or are you starting thinking about doing something at East sooner than two years from now?
As far as the work I've been doing, we were focusing primarily on this one course with some initial discussions on what the arts house would look like for eighth grade. There's been some conversations about what dance could look like beyond that, but no confirmed plans at this point.
But it's in conversation then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, I'm just curious, the curriculum committee that has the Intro to Dance and the, are those the three teachers of these courses? Scott Ronzmann, Julie Rabidoux, Brenda Mullard?
Brenda Mullard is the Fine Arts Coordinator, and she also has an arts background, an art background. She teaches art at East currently this year. Scott Ronzmann's is the theater teacher for sixth grade. And then Julie Rabidoux does have dance certification, and she did some work with the state as they updated their dance standards.
So then, they're not teaching these classes full-time? Do they have other, or do they just come in just for that specific course? I mean, are they part-time, or do they teach other classes in our district?
Yeah, just to clarify, Dr. Khan and I don't have clarification on whether any of those three would be the ones actually teaching those courses. I apologize. They help with the curriculum development piece. You know, it's kind of like chicken or the egg, you got to start with the curriculum and then, so.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, but they're, they, so the teachers tend to be teachers that also have other teaching assignments in our district. They may travel to Washington and, or else they're in Washington, they teach other things. Is that usually how this plays out? Or, these aren't, these don't become part-time teachers teaching these single two or three classes? Do you see what I'm asking?
I believe, I know what you're asking, and I don't, we don't have the answer.
Okay.
Between, between us tonight, we would have to get that information for you.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested in just knowing that. Once you know, I mean, you may not know for another month or two, so.
Any other question? I would like to, what opportunity, if any, will next year's seventh graders who are not in the sixth-grade arts house have to join the arts program in seventh grade? Is that an option?
So the ones that aren't currently in the arts house?
Right.
I have to defer to Washington as far as their application process for the arts house to see what those opportunities would be.
Right, if spots are available, we do give consideration to people who want to enroll over. And I would say that the arts, the support of the arts in general through the fine arts work that we're doing at Washington enhances not only the students who are participating in the arts through that program, but also the arts offerings throughout the school, just with the additional resources, the facilities, the funding that we have to make sure the art is, the arts are a vital part of what we're offering there, which we all know is a great engager of our students.
Any other questions, comments? We'll move that forward, thank you. Now, the West High School International Baccalaureate Health.
Sure.
Resources.
As you may know, the curriculum for the district's overall current sixth-grade and high school health and wellness courses were updated and approved back in 2016 according to our curriculum, our current curriculum templates, and in accordance with updated standards and legal expectations from the state of Wisconsin. In 2017, the Teaching and Learning Department proceeded to reconvene an ad hoc human growth and development advisory committee to provide feedback and input on the human growth and development units that are part of that and associated with the state law. As a result of their input and advising, curriculum teams then were again convened to revise the units and update the instructional resources in accordance with the state requirement pertaining to human growth and development instruction. Since that time, the district has also navigated updated laws pertaining to the requirement to provide life-saving skills instruction, including CPR, CCR, and the use of AEDs. While this was all happening, West High School was in the process of obtaining certification as an NYPD authorized school. And achieving authorization requires a more in-depth and sustained learning experience in various subject areas. So as such, Dr. Khan will now speak about a proposed health and wellness course that is exclusive to the West High Middle Years Program for two years from now, right?
Yep. So the Trends in Health and Wellness course that we're proposing for West High School will allow them to meet their concurrency of learning requirements that is part of the IB middle years program. And so in that, students need to have a single year of concurrency in this subject area in health and FIAID. And the students will be completing that based on West's decision in 10th grade. The current high school health and wellness course is taken by students at Franklin Middle School in eighth grade, so an additional course will be needed to meet the NYPD requirements. The proposed Trends in Health and Wellness course builds off of what students learned in the health and wellness course in eighth grade, giving them opportunities to study current health trends in greater depth and examine health topics and issues in the community. Over the 1920s school year, the West Physical Education Department will be developing their units and assessments that will meet the IB NYPD expectations. And I'm happy to answer questions about these courses or this course.
Christina?
Eric, and I know we're meeting in a couple weeks, so we can get into more of the details later. Curious if you've ever run our health education curriculum through the HECAT tool through the CDC? It's the Health Education Curriculum Analysis Tool. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the tool, and it, I started working with the health four years ago. I can't remember one way or the other, how in-depth we use that tool.
Yeah, we can talk more about it, too. Because I am curious with the health education curriculum also how it, how we're ensuring that there is alignment, as you were saying, with eighth grade, but that it's forward-thinking and meeting the needs of our diverse students. So can you talk a little bit about how that plays into that curriculum piece? Because it's about relationship building and those social, emotional pieces.
One point of clarification, are you referring, Michelle, to the course being proposed tonight or the pre-existing health curriculum overall with the question?
I'm asking just in general if you've ever used that tool.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Okay.
And to the question about relationships, that was one piece of feedback that came from the Community Advisory Committee on Human Growth and Development two years ago. So when we updated those units, we were very intentional as we developed the updated resources and recommendations for teacher use of instructional resources, that the resources being used are reflective of the diverse community that we live in.
Awesome, and can, do you know the publisher off the top of your head of this?
There is no publisher, we don't use a specific adopted resource.
Okay.
Instead, either we've located resources that meet criteria for different topics, or teachers are given an overarching framework of expectations of resources that they can then choose to meet individual schools.
Okay, so there's no book?
Correct.
Okay. Interesting, all right, thank you.
Any other questions about the Trends in Health and Wellness course that we're discussing? Go ahead.
I have a couple questions. On the proposed change or curriculum, the Joint Committee on National Health Standards 1995 and 2007 seems kind of dated. Is there anything that's more current that is out there?
Under the resources.
Under the resources, bottom of page six, it just seems, it's a, you know, 20 years ago, plus years ago. I was just wondering if there was something.
Correct.
You know, why you focused on that versus if there's anything that's more current.
These are the, so the national health standards, the most recent edition is 2007, and the most recent edition of the state health standards are 2011. And the reason we reference the 95 is there's some elements, language-wise, that we drew from in some of our overarching expectations and disciplinary characteristics. But the standards themselves are the 2011 Wisconsin model academic standards.
And that's the most current?
Correct.
As an aside, this is one challenge that we have with seeking a published vendor's resource for modern course, or courses that change rapidly. If we would have recommended a textbook three years ago, they wouldn't have included the topic of vaping, for instance. And yet, that is a major situation in America in teens, right? And so we have concerns about a static textbook and health and other topics. So we're cognizant of knowing that there needs to be some other method by which we ensure we have accurate, up-to-date information that is carefully vetted. And it's a difficult.
It's a good point and a really important point.
Sure.
Yeah.
But, okay, but is the state, do you know if the state's actually actively working to update their standards, their, you know, the DPI 2011 standards? Do you know if there's anything happening at the state level?
Did you send a turnover in that position?
Okay.
So I doubt they're going to address it anytime soon.
Okay.
Thank you, Vicky.
I have one more question.
What is the normal cycle for standards updates from the state?
Fifteen, 20 years?
Yeah, I know, that's, Jesus, it's been long.
They've created changes three separate times in the past 12 years related to things that are expected in health, which is why I referenced in my introduction the piece around CPR and AED. And, you know, back in 2006 or 2005, it was about shaken baby syndrome. The governor's law changed in 2012 about human growth and development. So even though they haven't updated the standards, they have kept creating, frankly, unfunded mandates that districts are asked to respond to and update and keep up with relative to more current things, so.
I do, so under, so page five, under Topics at a Glance, under Wellness Skills Review, there is line items noted as values. What is that related to?
In this case, it's a carryover from what's currently in the health class where students are asked to examine their own values. It's not an issue of value promotion, it's more about reflection on individual values.
And what kind of questions are asked to reflect on their values?
I'd have to go back to the resources and review what's in there.
Is there any way that you would be able to provide that for us before we vote on this?
Yeah, the curriculum material is available.
If it's okay with you, I'm just throwing this out there, since we're gonna be talking next week, I think it's on the 11th. If you wanted to come with that, we'd have to post it, but, or I think we'd have to post it, right? If we were to meet and talk about curriculum.
You'd probably be covering that then?
I'd like to jump in and just clarify the difference between the existing health curriculum and courses that have been previously approved and existing resources versus what West needs to do for its NYPDs. You'll notice in some, in part, a portion of the request is the fact that the West teachers need to get together and develop their units based on the training they will attend. This is really about the curriculum framework and approval to move forward with their planning and training, as was referenced earlier. By, I apologize, as you're getting on Ms. Barbian? Thank you. In regards to the training that the staff will undergo so that they can come back and they can flesh out the exact details related to this particular course. So there are some things we won't be able to answer relative to the guts and the actual instruction associated with it. I apologize for that.
But we would be glad to come back after that work is done and we could either through email or other measure or in person share some of those resources.
Andrew.
So, I know, I know many kids take Health in 8th grade, or is it, is it the norm or standard practice that kids take Health in 8th grade? Or is that?
It depends on the school. So the state law allows Health to be taken for high school credit in 8th grade. Because of the needs of the NYPD program, initially when Franklin was going through this, they opted to use the high school health class to meet their concurrency of learning requirements in 8th grade. So as West has expanded their NYPD for 9th and 10th grade, they've needed an additional class because all students take it at Franklin in 8th grade. The numbers in other middle schools differ and I would have to look, see what the percentages are.
Well, this is just for West.
This is just for West, correct.
Okay, so then, students won't take Health in Franklin in 8th grade?
They still will, because that's still needed to meet the concurrency of learning in middle school. This course will meet the concurrency of learning requirements for high school.
Okay, so, so who will, who will take this at West?
All 10th graders.
All 10th graders, so all 10th graders will have this one-year course?
It'll be, it's, this is a semester course. They will also take personal fitness as the FIAD semester to meet the full-year requirement.
Okay, so 10th graders, all 10th graders at West will take a one semester IB Health course?
Correct.
No, but that, it'll, but it'll be a, it will be Health slash PE for a semester? Or will it be a full year of half and half?
Sure, it's a full year of half and half. So we currently have a FIAD class, personal fitness, that will be, meet the PE semester requirement. We need to add an additional Health course to meet the high school health requirement for the sophomores.
But is it gonna be factions of both classes for the entire year? Are you gonna do one semester Health, one semester FIAD?
The intention is to be one semester Health, one semester of FIAD. And that way, from a scheduling perspective, students can meet it, it's more flexible for scheduling.
Yeah.
Okay, so the difference, the difference between going to, going to West as a 10th grader and going to Southwest as a 10th grader is if I'm a 10th grader at West, I have to take a semester of FIAD and I have to take a semester of IB Health even though I took Health in 8th grade. At Southwest, I'll have to take a semester of FIAD and I won't have to take the semester of Health. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So then, West sophomores will have one-half less elective credit opportunity?
Yes.
Whether, whether they're intending to continue on into IB program or further coursework or not?
Correct.
I thought it was a requirement for high school, for every high school student to take a course of Health, no?
A lot of them take it in 8th grade, though.
I understand that. What I'm saying though is 8th grade, I'm thinking high school, so 8th grade, not 10th grade, it's not required in high school.
No, it is not, although I think there's a lot of, not I think, there's a lot of research that would suggest that such an expectation would be beneficial for many communities. And as this curriculum cycle comes around and the next time the ad hoc advisory committee comes together, it wouldn't shock me if that becomes a recommendation.
No, thanks for that clarification. I had it wrong. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, the certification for CPR and AED, so the staff there will be certified to teach both of these. Do we have staff in other schools or do we have staff who are trained in it or trained to, are trained trainers in this or what?
In our FIAD department, we currently have two teachers at Southwest as part of lifeguarding who are CPR instructors.
Okay.
Over the summer before we start the new officiating and coaching class, which also has the CPR requirement, we'll be certifying three teachers as CPR instructors at, oh, two additional ones, one at East and one at Preble. And then West will need that certification as well for 2020.
Do we have AEDs in every building?
The training materials, we have ones that meet the, the health requirement by law, but we'll need to purchase additional.
Do we have the, we have the devices?
Yes, we do. In all, yes.
And do we have someone in every building with these devices who knows how to use them?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay. Jamie.
With the 8th grade Health course and then continuing on to take the IB Health course, is, so is the IB Health course, is it basically an extension of deeper knowledge of Health? Or is it kind of an overview of what we've already learned in 8th grade?
That's, that's a good question. It's actually, it goes deeper. So it's deeper topics and more current trends, but also looking at more of the community impacts and community resources related to these health topics.
So will students still be required to take it in 8th grade or could they just take the course in 10th grade?
Franklin's students would still need to take it in 8th grade because that's a requirement for their Middle Years Program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We'll move that forward.
Thank you. I apologize. One extra thing I'd like to add is I would defer to Mr. Stengel and the facilities team to be able to clarify the details pertaining to the location and training for AED devices around our building from a facility standpoint. We're speaking as pertains to the Health and PE instruction, so.
Okay, no.
And I did get verbal cue from, from Ms. Byer that that is something that is covered. But it is, it's, it's a related tangent, but not something that they're responsible for.
No, not a problem, but the discussion begged the question and I appreciate you.
Much appreciated.
Offering the information. All right, thank you. And now we have Mathematics, Advanced Placement, Computer Science. And Eric is fleeing.
Sure. And we have several courses that we're going to be sharing related to mathematics and elective choice. And so that is something that we would like to share a little bit more on with Cindy Cantwell and again, Mr. Fries.
Yep. Finally, this evening from Teaching and Learning, Cindy is here, Cindy Cantwell is here to present numerous elective course curriculum revisions and course proposals for you to consider. The, I'm speaking broadly about the number that you'll be here. And I realize that she will have them each introduced individually, but she'll be introducing them collectively because they're kind of part of a, the whole kit and caboodle related to our upper-level high school electives that remained in need of being updated over the past seven years. These courses brought forward tonight do reflect a diverse range of college readiness options for our students at the high school level and we believe reflect our district's continued commitment to helping all students graduate mathematically proficient and prepared for the next level of their education. Cindy, take it away.
Thank you. During this 2018-19 school year, teams of high school math teachers collaborated on the following high school math elective course documents. The work was important and valuable and we really appreciated the hard work and deep thinking that those teacher teams did. Trigonometry and math modeling documents were updated to reflect the Wisconsin State Math Standards. AP Computer Science A was updated to reflect the new Wisconsin Computer Science Standards as well as the AP Standards. And lastly, two dual-credit math course documents were written to reflect the changes to NWTC's math offerings. These new courses are College Technical Math 1A and Mathematical Reasoning. Those two courses replace college mathematics and math with business applications.
And we recognize that initially you're speaking to us tonight or you may have questions pertaining to the Advanced Placement Computer Science A course. So we will head back to that original.
We'll just take it in order, but you've spoken to them all, so we will. Any questions or comments about Advanced Placement Computer Science? Hearing none, we'll move that forward. Then we have College Technical Math 1A. Nothing, we'll move that forward. Mathematical Modeling? Anything? No, we'll move that forward. We're out of roll. Mathematical Reasoning? Yeah? Trigonometry? Thank you for that. Oh, go ahead, Brenda.
That did it, trigonometry. Is trigonometry a new course or we've had it for a while? And it's intended to be taken and depending on where you think you're going in life instead of pre-calc, is that correct?
It can be taken in addition to pre-calc, but yes, as a fourth-year elective.
Okay, all right. And it's not, I always thought trigonometry was kind of required if you're a math person and I thought it was already covered in pre-calc and Algebra II to some degree.
It is, but this goes more in-depth and it's a semester course that concentrates just completely on trig and all the applications.
Okay, thanks.
Andrew.
Yeah, I mean, I think, am I just stating myself that Algebra II is usually often just called Algebra II Trig?
Right. So we, some, some school districts just have Algebra II and don't include trig and have that maybe as a separate semester. So they might have Algebra II and then a semester of trig. We combine Algebra II and trigonometry together in the one Algebra II course.
This would be, so, so students would take Algebra, Algebra II prior to taking this deeper trig course?
Correct.
Okay. So who would, who would be likely to, who would be likely to take this course or who would this course be marketed towards if presumably you've, you've probably got a pretty full thing of four years of math if you're going towards a STEM occupation or STEM field?
The, the course would be more, I would think, for engineering students, but yet, as, as you move through pre-calculus and into calculus, that's also an option. I think students who find the trigonometry they've done in Algebra II engaging and want to learn more about it tend to gravitate toward this semester-long course.
Instead of what? Like what else would give?
And also maybe depending on schedule flexibility. So it's a one semester course. So they might not take pre-calculus or they might not take calculus. They might take like math modeling one semester and trigonometry one semester or maybe just trigonometry. If they want to get that extra math class in before graduation, but maybe a full-year course isn't gonna be fitting into their schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Will all of these classes be offered at all of the schools? All the high schools?
Offered, but may not run. In some cases, some have a history of quite popularity due to a staff member who's got a lot of background in history in running the course. I think the math modeling course is often run exclusively at Preble typically. So it may vary, but we updated the course documents and we'll keep working with the math teachers around interest and it'll be available in the course book and we'll have to base it on that.
And I share the, the, not concern, but the interest in how people identify as needing trigonometry. Because clearly, we're not there. But I'm assuming that there are students who know exactly that this is where they need to be.
I think it'll be important for us to make sure that we're working with our guidance counselors and with our math teachers so that they have a full understanding of how, how this fits and they can, they can think about that as they're communicating with various students. I also think that, we talked before about the Chinese courses and the blended learning opportunities and the technology piece.
Right.
You know, if we have a handful of students at one, a couple of different schools, it might be a good opportunity for, for others to do a blended learning opportunity as well.
Good, thank you. Michelle.
Just as a follow-up, as our students continue to progress with advanced ABMR and with more rigorous bridges, we will see many, many more students engaging at higher, in higher levels. We can anticipate that, we're planning on that. And I think it's a very, very realistic opportunity to look forward to.
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Fries and especially Cindy Cantwell for the work that's been done around math over the course of the past year. There have been a number of things that we're moving forward on in addition to these, these topics enhancing our ability for our teachers to serve all students. And I really appreciate the work that both of them are doing as well as the work of Dr. Kahn who was here presenting before.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks all. Good night.
All right, and our final discussion item is American Institutes for Research proposal.
And I'd like Dr. Judy Wiegand to join me here for our presentation as Executive Director of our Secondary Schools.
As Dr. Wiegand comes up to the table, I know that this proposal is something that warrants good discussion and I know that the science of turnaround is not something that is, is always shared and well-understood. So this whole comprehensive school reform turnaround discussion, I think, is really important for us as a district to have this conversation.
And so, I wanted to share that the success, of course, as you know, of all of our schools is central to the mission of the Green Bay Area Public School District. And as you know, the district entered into a partnership with the American Institutes for Research in the 2018-19 school year to promote accelerated turnaround for Washington Middle School. And we are seeking to continue with this important support for the children of Washington. It's an active cursor. There we go. So why are we here? We're here tonight to provide the board with our proposal to continue this accelerated turnaround for Washington Middle School through our partnership with the American Institutes for Research. We want to share a bit about how preliminary information is showing very positive results, both academic and behavioral results. And we also plan to answer and/or gather any questions that you may have that will assist you in your decision-making regarding approval of this contract. Taking a look at some of our behavioral results, you can see here a chart with our out-of-school suspensions with a clear and significant decrease of out-of-school suspensions. So although we're holding our students to the same high standards, we've reduced out-of-school suspension by over 50% from this year to that, last, last year to this year, looking at data through June 3rd. This also represents, when you look at the number of students spending less time in out-of-school suspension, a significant increase of classroom time, classroom instruction, nearly 3,000 additional student hours of time where students are spent in learning. Taking a look at our academic results, we are still, of course, waiting for our Wisconsin Forward Exam results. And we're, we're in the process of closing out the school year. So there's additional information that we want to look at regarding performance of our students, including the Forward Exam results, which we won't receive for quite some time yet. But we're seeing very positive preliminary academic results in literacy and math, which were two of the areas that were a strong focus of our, our work. Looking at the STAR NCE results, and you're pretty familiar with STAR NCE from, from prior experience, we are seeing that all measured cohorts made growth in their STAR NCE areas. So as a whole, the students made significant progress. And then when you broke it down into the individual groups, looking at various student populations, each of those cohorts in the different grade levels showed growth in reading and math that was significant. And we also showed greater than average growth seen in many of our minority student cohorts. So we're really seeing a closing of the gap. We're also looking forward to the end-of-year results and being able to look at those results for beh- and being able to look at those results for behavior and academics as the year comes to a close, and we have more additional information. So taking a look at those STAR NCE results, again, you can see significant percentile change. And realizing that a few points on this is really, really significant. Taking a look at, for instance, the seventh-grade scores going from NCE of 23 to 30, that's showing that compared to the fall, the winter scores, there was a massive shift of the students in their math abilities. And you can see that in each of those grade-level areas, in each of those, those areas for reading and math, there was significant increase. Thinking about district implications, what does this mean for us as, as a group overall? And really, Dr. Wiegand has, has played a large role with, working with all of our schools, and we, we're all, of course, are, are working on things related to, to our secondary and elementary schools. But there's been a strong tie to what we are doing with AIR and how it's advancing our work throughout the district. School turnaround, as, as Dr. Langenfeld said, it, it is truly a science. And it's a new science that's being recognized by the federal government, and it's something that we have focused on because turning around a school in a challenging situation is something that takes time and deep levels of expertise. We have a variety of people here who are very strong in their individual leadership and their skill area, but the work of turnaround science has to do with making sure those efforts are strongly coordinated. And basically, what it also allows us to do is take people who are proven operators within the system and being able to take those skills and expand them to, to additional other schools. Some ways that we've done that in our district this year are really a deepening understanding of the systemic needs of our turnaround practices in hiring and leadership coaching processes, and also in better use of student data for continuous improvement. I would love to say that we are at vision state for each of these areas, but it's something that, that we are learning about and continuing to prove, improve on as we move forward. One area that we focused on is making sure that we're building systems and structures that allow for sharing of lesson plans and ideas throughout the, the teaching ranks. We, our collaborative learning teams work together with facilitation and based on observation that's being done through the work of AIR with the coaches. So they're able to work with our teams so that their instruction is improved. Overall, we're seeing that the universal level of instruction is being raised significantly at Washington, particularly in reading and math. And again, another area that we're focusing on is the data piece. And we're really using, as, as you've seen us come forward with our system of continuous improvement for the district as a whole, really focusing on accountability. How do we make sure that through-line of accountability goes from the classroom teacher, through the principal, through a supervisor of school, through to the district, and then to, to the board? As well as supportively, how is the board supporting district office, who supports the principal, who supports the teachers, so that they can best support the students? So that system of continuous improvement is really what we have been focusing on, working on. I'm not sure if there's anything else that you'd add at this time, Dr. Wiegand?
Just to make sure that we're all clear on, and using the same vocabulary. So when I talk about turnaround schools, I'm going to use a definition that comes from the Wallace Foundation. Talk about turnaround is a dramatic and comprehensive intervention in a low-performing school that produces significant gains in achievement within two years and readies the school for the longer process of transformation to a high-performance organization. So, so I make sure that we're all using the same vocabulary and have the same understanding when we talk about Washington as a turnaround school. And sometimes that's difficult to admit that one of our schools has gotten to that point where it is a low, pretty significant low-performing school, and the work that has to be done. And also that when you take a look at the work around turnaround schools, that, again, looking at some of the research on this, that practitioners that have taken this on, and I'll have to testify that, to that myself this year, consistently say they were unprepared for the severity of the student needs and the school issues that have to be addressed. And I will say that has been my experience this year in working very closely with the building administration and staff at Washington Middle School. As to, once you start peeling off all those layers, there's a lot of work to be done. I also know that you are facing some challenging questions from the community regarding fiscal resources and continuing this work with AIR. That's not an easy decision. So I'm here at least to share about my experience to date in working with AIR in Washington.
I would also say that each of us, from the superintendent through working with our principal, Ms. Olson, each of us has had experience in, in running successful schools and in turning around schools. The difference that we're looking for here is the difference of accelerated turnaround. It, it generally takes, the research shows, takes five to seven years for a school to really have turnaround under a normal process. But the work that we're doing, because of the need that we saw at Washington and the need that the community saw, as far as what we wanted to offer our students, we wanted to make sure that we were accelerating that work so that the change could come. There wasn't enough time for us to wait, five years of kids to go through. We wanted to make sure that that change happened quickly and was well-supported. I would also say that the difference is, in working with AIR, thinking about it from a medical perspective to a degree, administrators like ourselves are general practitioners, who might be skilled in what we do as a general practitioner, but there's also a time when, when a patient has particular needs that we want to make sure are, are looked at and examined, and, and that we have feedback from a deeper level of expertise and a deeper level of resource. So for example, you might send out for a specialist, or you might have somebody report to the Mayo Clinic, for example, so that we can have deeper understanding of where the issues are. That doesn't mean that we don't learn from that and use that experience and expand it into the other schools, or that we don't have the capacity to serve in, in performing, in helping schools turn around. It means that we know when the issue is very complex. It's important for us to have the wisdom to seek an outside resource to, to give us that deeper level of insight.
Jamie had a question earlier, she had a hand up, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Sure, okay. So, we, go ahead.
Okay, got it.
Did someone have a question?
Jamie had raised her hand.
Don't hold back.
Okay.
Are you ready to continue?
Yes.
Okay.
So, as we note in the contract, there are a number of different pieces that we're focusing on for expected results. Higher expectations for, and results for all students, improved culture and climate, more effective teachers and leaders, improved parent and community engagement, as well as coherent, disciplined approach for, for teaching and learning. So those, again, are, are what we will be delivering on through our partnership with AIR. And I know that Dr. Wiegand, in working with Ms. Olson, was also soliciting some, some feedback from some of the teachers, and if there were anything that you'd like to add related to some comments from teachers as far as how did they feel about this, this partnership? And this isn't meant to be a full, all-inclusive perspective, but these were things that, that some of the teachers had made regarding comments as far as how AIR had been a support to them.
Yeah, very anecdotal, certainly, coming from some of the teachers, about being hesitant at first to have the consultants come into their classroom, about when they finally did, they wished they would have had them come in sooner. Veteran teacher finding the partnership invaluable, that the classroom support with the consultants when they're onsite is exactly what was needed. And again, even their virtual participation in the collaborative learning teams and helping to confirm and guide the work that they're doing. Again, just very anecdotal, and look forward to being able to come back and have a full report to the board. Those are just some very short comments.
Would you anticipate that we will have a full report for 1819?
Whenever.
I'm assuming it will be in July, once the year has come to a close. Right now, the schools, as you know, all of our schools are abuzz with graduat-, we had multiple graduations that many of you participated in, and we were closing down the school year. It also gives us a time to take stock, to reflect, to continue thinking about that, that cycle of, of continuous improvement from, from the annual angle. And as we, as we digest that, that information through the month of June, we would be then able to share in July.
So do you, do you, would you call this a report at this point to get us to where we need to make the decision for 1920?
I would, I would say that this is preliminary information, and I'll, I'll share a little bit more about what our request is, and then it also, what, what's our rationale for why we're proposing at this time? Another piece to consider is that, looking at the Wallace Foundation documents and other documents on turnaround, the infrastructure for turnaround is not sufficient to meet the needs of all the schools in the country. There's a high demand, and there aren't a lot of, a lot of people that are able to yet provide this service. So when we're working with an organization, we have to make a decision whether or not we're going to continue with them, because they're in high demand from another, of other, a number of other districts who would be very glad to have their services. So we want to make sure that we're able to make that decision from an informed standpoint, that we've had cyclical data coming forward, and then this is meant as, as a bit of a summary. But I think that, I think that when we, we share our board request, we're requesting that the Board of Education continue to vital support for Washington Middle School by approving the American Institutes for Research as the lead partner for the 2019-20 school year. And last year, as was noted, we contracted for $394,000, which was substantial. That first year is meant as a foundational year. There's additional work that's done with, with establishing the relationship, with the needs analysis, even though that's something that will be ongoing. That first year does require a deeper investment. But the contract for the 19, 1920 school year is a cost of $286,000. This is a significant investment of taxpayer money, but it does represent a reduction of $108,000, or just under 30% reduction. And that was part of something that we, when we talked about it in last year, when we brought it forward, it's meant as a gradual stepping down, a gradual release, so that there's heavy support in the first year, less support the next year, and then it would diminish, diminish after that. So that's, that's what we're requesting. And then, really thinking, what is our rationale for continued support? Why are we asking this? And we feel, we strongly feel, that Washington students, families, and staff deserve accelerated turnaround support. There was strong demand from community, that we get, do everything possible to make sure that we're supporting the students of Washington. We also, as we noted, we are seeing preliminary improved academic and behavioral data that is significant. A reduction of out-of-school suspensions by more than half. All cohorts at all grade levels showing growth in math and reading. Those are, those are impressive numbers, even if they're preliminary numbers. As well as continued follow-through on initial turnaround investment is fiscally responsible. If we think about the work that is done for that first year, that's the foundational year when the treatment, back to that mental model, that, or that, that medical model, that treatment is just starting. And we want to make sure that we're following through with that treatment so that we can achieve the results that are intended. As we shared as well, that final point, strong support from the board and community are key for, for Washington. When we came forward last year, we addressed the board that, and talked about how this won't work unless we have support from the board and support from the community and support through the district office to make sure that, that Washington is well-supported. And we're, we're glad that the board has been very careful in, in the leadership and governance and fiscal responsibility, but we're also very thankful for the support that you've given us in the work being done at Washington. So that is, is why we're requesting this proposal.
We'll take some questions now? Questions, comments? Go ahead, Andrew.
Sure, so I guess my, you know, my, my concern is wanting to make sure that if, you know, if I'm going to be voting for this amount of money or for, for some amount of money, you know, what, what resources are we getting? And I think it's about the, the pace at which we're moving from, you know, significant air support towards, towards being able to, you know, bring everything in-house that we've learned through the air process. So I guess for, for me personally, individually, I didn't, I didn't expect to have probably a request at, at the end of the 1819 year of zero dollars for any air services. I didn't expect that in June I would hear, we're done. And I probably didn't expect to hear a cost of two-thirds of the first-year cost, because I, I think I remember some discussion about, you know, front-loading things and a lot of the pieces being upfront, and there maybe being some, some costs. So I, I was, I, I do feel a little bit of sticker shock here to, to a point. I'm wondering what, what we're, what are we getting exactly? How many, you know, how many expert, how many days of expert time is included in, in this? Because I, I think it was a, a reasonable point that Mr. Denny made, that, that you could hire more than one high-level, full-time professional for that. So that's a valid, I think it's a valid question.
Sure. So asking about the deliverables in the document that we provided, which is the, the AIR proposal, on page one, it lists the three proposed deliverables in the areas of school leadership, professional development, and coaching, which would be 12 days of onsite coaching for the principal, as well as 12 hours of virtual coaching, and a number of other services under that area of, of school leadership, professional coaching. Under the instructional coaching and support, there were 34 days of onsite support for mathematics that we'd be providing, as well as 34 days for English Language Arts, and 31 hours of onsite, or of virtual coaching. We'd also be looking at a tracking tool, as well as the, the reality, reality checks that we'd be providing for our, our group as well. I would say as well, an important piece that surfaced this year is when leadership recognized some of the additional needs, it really did give us indication of how we could improve our system as a whole. We're not there yet in completing that work, but it really was able to shine a light on some important areas for us. An example of which would be our pacing. Thinking about our pacing for particular courses is not fully aligned with where the Wisconsin Forward Exam falls. So there are certain topics, for instance, that aren't necessarily covered before that exam, that we want to make sure that we're giving support to our students and, and preparing them well for that exam so that they can demonstrate their learning as well as possible. So that was an area that came through the instructional coaching piece. And then, as far as additional work, there, there was additional work being done with continuous improvement and coherence. It's really tapping into the, what are considered to be the best research minds related to the areas of, of supporting schools through the curriculum, through the leadership, and through turnaround as a science itself. So it's, it is, it isn't expensive, or it isn't inexpensive. When we think about medical services, when, when we do have a loved one that we need to have, a go-to Mayo, for example, there's, there's a significant cost involved. And if, if it was true cost, not just that covered by insurance, we would be blown away by sticker shock as well. What we're doing with our AIR work is having impact on not just the Washington Middle School, not just our secondary schools, but I think as well, when we have our board retreat, you'll see how it's infused into the Guide to Continuous Improvement and that through-line accountability work we want for the entire district. Because it's about, it's about being warmly demanding. It's about having expectations and holding people to those expectations in a supportive way and helping the system move forward. So it is, there is a scope of work that's described in great detail throughout the proposal, but those, those first few pages really outline what exactly it looks like from number of hours.
Laura.
I'm looking under deliverables. I'm particularly interested in improved parent and community engagement. Can you, is it possible to look back at the last year and just kind of give me, give us, I should say, an idea of what progress you feel like we've made in that department?
I think that...
Because I know that's particularly challenging.
Yeah. I think that there, there's always more work that can be done. I think that transparency and voice, especially for underserved, underrepresented students, is really important. is really important to us professionally and, and personally. It's something of value that we hold, uh, in, in very high regard. And I would say that, that, that is one of the things that drew us to Cindy as a principal and also in partnering with AIR, something that was really important for us as well. Uh, the, the type of community events that we've, we've had at Washington, the positivity and the air of positivity, I think has, it's been a change in the way that Washington is regarded. I think you've seen several, I mean, a high number of, of positive news pieces uh, throughout the, uh, the, the past year related to different events that we've had at Washington, different promotion, inclusion of family. But is there more we can do? Is there more we should do? Yes.
Can I also add that part of the work, um, that I know Cindy and her team did with the A R, A I R lead person, as well as the coaches, is when we were doing the STAR assessment and the decision was made to share that information, mail it to parents and so forth, which hadn't been done in the past. But then also to have that conversation with that parent and the student about your scores and what does that look like? And for some, it was very good news. For others, it was pretty disturbing to say, what do you mean? My child's in seventh or eighth grade, but if their performance is here. And so that was part of that coaching piece as well from AIR with Cindy and her team as to, as we continue to dig in here and take a look at student performance, being able to have those conversations, what does that look like then with a parent and a student? So that's just one example of the parent engagement piece and community engagement.
Thank you.
Go to, go ahead, Michelle.
Well, just a follow-up anecdotally, there were two different reports to me that after the, and these are, these are important because they start to change a culture, climate. Last week, they had their advancement via individual determination celebration. And it was very well-attended by families representing many backgrounds and, and diversity, from what I understand, and very good attendance from our parents, which is very important. The other piece that was shared with me came from, um, the Fine Arts when they did their, their play. And they brought a lot of families in. And it was reported to me by, by one of the theater folks that people stayed around. In other words, families felt welcome and stayed after the performance, which isn't always the, they said it's never happened before. So families stayed and spent time with one another. So there's, there's a slow transition into what's happening. It could be the Fine Arts, I'm not attributing that, but I know that families are more engaged from what I'm seeing and knowing.
Yeah, thank you, I have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is, and I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I apologize. Is there a reason why the April monthly report was marked confidential with the AIR?
It actually, it actually is not confidential, it's a public document.
It's a public document?
Yeah.
I just was wondering.
It was in, uh, the, another document that was marked confidential, but it's not confidential.
Okay, so it can be shared with the community?
Sure, in fact, I have copies here and I can, uh, put out extra copies for, for people that are, are interested, as well as we can consider how it might be posted through Neptune. But it was, it was, there was no intent of having it be a confidential piece. I'll share that with the board and then I'll put, uh, the additional copies.
It's almost like you set me up for that question. I didn't. No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
But I'm glad you asked.
Yes.
I guess we were going to talk about it.
Thanks. Oh, he's walking around, um, I'll wait until he gets back. So I think one of the things that I'm struggling with, and I, in my current job, I oversee a, a grant program that, um, funds, oh, a half a million dollars to schools, funding to schools around the country. And we get our money from many different sources, like many nonprofits. We scrimp and we beg many times to have that money, to get that money. And in those, that money requires robust, detailed reports that tell us exactly what we're going to do at the beginning, that indicate that, right? And then say at the end, what, what clearly was accomplished?
Sure.
And I loved your question, Laura, about engagement, because that's always where I go to, like, what's the engagement piece? And while I think your answer was lovely, it didn't really tell me anything about what actually happened. Because as you know, initiatives are great, right? Events are great. And it's, this is not to say that any of the events at Washington aren't wonderful and include parents and that they're smiling kids and great things happening, but that's not what the money is going towards. The money is going towards systemic change that's going to create a school where everybody can thrive. And what I don't see, honestly, from this report is anything that I can turn to the community and say, this year was a success. I just don't have that information. And if I'm missing something, or if there's something else that I could be provided, like, I would love to be able to turn around, but I just, this is, this is all pretty fluffy for me, especially in the amount of money that we're being asked of taxpayer money.
And as I outlined before, this is not intended to be the end of your report.
Right. But I'm, but I'm being asked to make a decision based on that. So I understand that we have to meet in the middle and that there's going to, just let me finish for a second, that there's going to be a final report in the summer, and I understand that. But for me, as an independently elected official, I can't make a decision based on this. I need to see something else. Um, and even like your commentary about the teachers, you know, it's lovely.
It's anecdotal, though.
But how much can I weigh my hat on that? Because the flip side is, I've heard those positive stories, but I've also heard things like, it's not going well last. And so I'm not saying that here as evidence of, it's terrible. But I would like to see clear data from surveys and so forth. So that's kind of just where I'm sitting right now. Um, I have other questions, but, um, just wanted to sort of share that feeling where I am.
Can I, um, ask a question, um, in reply? At the beginning of the school year, I think it was in October, we came to the board with the indicators of success for Washington Middle School. And I don't know if it was a board vote or not, but I guess for me, that was really important as well as to how are we going to make a decision if we're doing the right work? And so I guess I'll, I've bought some feedback on those indicators of success, if those were not the right ones for the board, or if something needs to be changed. That's not for tonight, but in moving forward, it's really important to have that type of feedback.
Yeah, and I think, you know, like the April report, I was just, I was looking at it again because I wasn't here and I think there's great, there's great information in there. But we need to, it, it, it needs to be condensed and we need to be able to communicate and demonstrate to the community that we, there are clear results coming out of this investment. The community, I, I don't have the capacity to go on a three-hour presentation about this deep dive. They want to see, and I'll actually get, goes to my next point. Um, I know one of the deliverables was, um, one year of academic growth. So the preliminary academic results slide, I don't know if you can go to that one. Did these results indicate that you're on track to, to reach that goal of one year of academic growth in these areas?
Sorry, I clicked on my computer, I wasn't clicking, it didn't go on my...
Because that was on the, um, that was on the indicators from April. So just curious if, is that demonstrating that we're going to meet that goal?
It's demonstrated, demonstrating that we're on a, a very positive trajectory. I think we really have to see what are the end-of-year results. Uh, I do believe, though, that the, uh, when we're looking at the behavioral data, which was one of our strong focuses, that the significant decrease in suspensions, basically fewer than half as compared with the year before, that's a pretty significant impact on, on, on climate and culture and behavior. And I think for those of you who have spent time, many of you have spent time in the halls at Washington, there's a different feel at Washington. There's a, there's, um, feel of positivity and I think that there's a feel of order, for the most part. It's a middle school. There are things that happen in middle schools, but I would say it's, it's very similar to any other middle school I've been part of.
But to go back to my question, John, does this trend that you see here indicate that we are going to, like, can you anticipate from these numbers that by the end of that report in Janu-, July, that we are going to reach that goal? Or how far off the mark do you anticipate us being?
Yeah, I think for myself, I would prefer to do a more complete report to the board. That can be in a Friday update, um, specific to those indicators of success. Do we have that data, which we would for the STAR? We certainly won't have our forward test results, um, prior to that. We'll certainly have our suspension data and that other piece, but I'd like to do a more, um, complete report.
That would be really helpful. And I think, and I think too, to go back to the discipline statistics, yes, this is love, this is great to see out of s- school suspensions. But again, this is a very small, very small sliver of what is happening in terms of climate and culture and discipline. And, um, and I'm not saying that this is happening at all, but, you know, if we can't see the bigger results, then we're not able to see the full picture. And then how am I truly to know that what is being reported is what's actually, or how that's happening and how that's sort of fostering? Does, does that make sense?
It does.
So anything further that you could provide would really help for me to be able to make an informed decision.
Okay, so I'll certainly do a report that is then framed with those indicators.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
I said Eric, but...
I know, but he's...
Sorry.
Yeah, we're blocked here in the, um, it's okay. It's my understanding, if, I always had to state that, that the N C E, um, just a quick, uh, it's how I look at N C Es. If someone goes from a nineteen point four at fall to a nineteen point four at winter, they are on track for a one-year, one-year growth.
Correct.
Can you say that again, Brenda?
So if, if, the idea, fifty is the, the, um, I mean, gold standard, so to speak. It's, if you're at a fifty N C E, then you're at the, you're at grade level. If you go, if you have a fifty N C E from sixth grade and in seventh grade you have a fifty N C E, you've grown a year. So if you have a fifty in sixth grade and you get a sixty, you've grown, and I don't know what the numbers are, but you've grown significantly more than a year. So I look at these numbers saying, okay, in fall, it's nineteen point four, in winter, it's twenty-three. Those, that group has grown significantly more than what would be projected as one year's growth. Because the winter number is set for a winter timed, timestamp for taking that test. And so if the sixth graders were just strictly making one year's growth, it would be nineteen point four to nineteen point four, and they would be making a year's growth. So when you have a higher number, it means they're accelerating their growth.
And I think exactly how you just described it is important for our community to understand that. Because looking at this isn't going to...
Right, exactly. You look, and that's why, I mean, N C E is, is, is really useful in terms of talking, but it, but you have to understand what the number means. And so the, so growth and having the same number, it doesn't make, you know, it's not intuitive to most people, but that's how N C Es work.
Yeah, thank you for that.
So just as an example, looking at the reading number up there, uh, sixth grade reading going from twenty point seven to twenty-eight. If the students had made, as you said, average growth, that number would be a twenty point seven as the winter, uh, N C E average, but it's, it's shot up to twenty-eight, which is, uh, meaning, and this is a, a little bit of a looser interpretation, but it's, it's, it's close to being a full grade level beyond what you would expect. If it were ten points, that would be a full grade level. So it would mean that, that you've made not only average growth for the time between fall and winter, but that you've moved that cohort, that whole cohort, up nearly an additional grade level. But I think that, again, this is preliminary and it's not, uh, it doesn't, doesn't have all the detail that we need related to the, uh, the measures that we set aside for the board in the October reports.
Right, and this is just the work session, so we do have time to gather more information. I appreciate that.
Good feedback.
Eric, are you ready now?
Yes, I'm ready. I don't, I don't know if there's a question in here somewhere, but I, this is really hard, especially being new to the board. Um, and, and so I, I've got a lot going on and maybe if I just say it out loud, some, a question will come out. So obviously, investment in Washington Middle School is important.
Yes.
Uh, we made that, the board made that decision, um, agree that we owe the rapid turnaround. I, I want to make sure that we haven't made an investment, but don't go far enough. If we, you know, if we weren't going to do this, oh, we spent all this money and then we, we didn't finish it and see it all the way through and, and didn't see out our investment. So that's one thought that's going on in my mind. The other side of it, though, is, is thinking about rapid turnaround in the investment. So the board would be making almost seven hundred thousand dollars over two years in Washington Middle School. And I think about, uh, needing to make that investment at Washington. When do we take a look at what other schools need that same investment? And we can talk about the anecdotal, the, the other support that they're getting, but when I look at the hours of coaching for the administrators and for the teachers, um, I, I look at our elementary schools. Could, could we go further up the river and, and prevent some of this? Can we, can we help build better kids earlier? You know, so that, I'm wrestling with that, that thought. You know, the two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, can we invest that in, in another way? Again, I don't want to bail on AIR if we've, we've made this investment and, and that's where we need to go. And, and I don't have the, the benefit of being on the board and, and making that, that, that decision with all of the information. So, um, I just, I think about Franklin and, and feedback that I hear from Franklin, I think about our elementary schools and the, the, the support that they would, would like. And I bet I could go to any elementary school principal that, that's struggling right now and say, hey, if I could get you twelve hours or twelve days of onsite coaching, if I could get your teachers, um, this support, would you benefit from that? And the answer would be absolutely yes.
Absolutely.
So, want to continue to support Washington. The, the other thing is that, when does, when does this stop? I mean, if, if this is the secret and all of a sudden we've unlocked this, that contracting with AIR helps to, to make all of our kids experience this great success, that knowledge tells me we need to find a way to spend this money in all of our schools because all of our kids deserve it, not just Washington. So I don't think anywhere in there is a question. But those are all the thoughts that are going on in my head right now. And I don't know how I would be able to make a, a decision on this in two weeks.
Sure, and I can, uh, maybe, maybe, um... React to, to some of the things that you said. And I, I have very, very strong agreement with many of the things you said as well. Looking at Franklin, looking at many of our, our elementaries, so, very similar needs. Part of what we're doing in our work with Washington as we're going through a leadership transition at Franklin is making sure that we have structures and supports in place, including some of the things that we're doing with our hiring process, so that we're choosing somebody that will be a, a good, strong, successful leader there. I also look at the, um, E S S A, uh, work that we're doing with our districts, which is the state identification and continuous improvement, making sure that there are parallels between how we're supporting at Washington, the lessons we're learning there, making sure that they're spreading into our, our, our other schools. Uh, it's, it's vital for us to, when you see the, the Guide to Continuous Improvement that we'll present during the, uh, retreat this summer, uh, it's vital to us that we have a, a way of doing very similar work in all of our schools. It might not be with the same, uh, level of specialty expertise that we needed for this situation because we're gaining from that specialty expertise, uh, and able to, able to spread that. Not to say that we won't need some support in other schools, but we're making sure that the, the lessons we're learning, we're applying, uh, to those other, other areas. And it is upstream. Washington is a segment in the river. It's a, the elementaries flow into Washington and the Washington students flow out to east. The successful graduation of these students we watched yesterday is a product. It's the, 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 the end of that journey for those students through our K-12 system. But we have to really think about what does the support look like at, at how? Through our community school and our, our focus there, what does our support look like in each of our schools that, that are moving forward into, um, into, to Washington? Very important comments, thank you.
And so maybe also goes to then, the work that's being done with AIR at Washington. How has it changed then the systems and the processes at the district level office in order to make those type of changes and do that type of work at other schools? Could be another way of taking a look at it. So what lessons have we learned? And how do we, how do you know then, as a board member, that changes are taking place then at the organizational level?
I, I guess I just, I question, what would it look like if we choose to spend these dollars? And we've got this and we know that we'll continue to be successful and continue to see metrics. What would it look like if it wasn't there?
Sure.
You know, I wouldn't expect all of a sudden suspensions to go back to seven hundred.
No. But could we sustain the effort?
Yeah, do we sustain, do we take the lessons that we learned and continue to apply them without the support of AIR? Um, you know, do we spend half of that amount of money i- in another way? Um, and can we continue to use those lessons learned?
Sure.
That's just whatever I...
Good questions.
I just have a, like, minor clarifying question. On the preliminary academic results, um, slide, the first one, uh, you refer to all measured cohorts. Is that referring to all students who took the STAR test, or is there a certain subject pool that was used?
What I was referring to there is, uh, all, so we had the general average score, but then we broke it down into other, uh, other groupings of students. For example, looking at our, our Asian students, looking at our Native American students, looking at our students of mixed race, looking at students from a variety of grade levels, gender. Each of those areas showed growth. And the rea-, that, that's important to us because all means all. And that, that's important to us, because all means all to us. And I, I wouldn't want something that was benefiting one student group that didn't benefit everybody.
That issue of disproportionality.
Yes.
Important one.
I just want to piggyback off what you said, Eric, too, because I think that, that those implications for the investment are crucial. We, I would love to know more deeply, again, not a hundred page, I would love to know how that has shifted decisions that you've made at your job.
Sure.
How has that shown up in other schools? How is that information, dissemination of information and leadership shift, or whatever you want to describe it? How is that already impacting? Those are the ways that we can demonstrate to our community that the value is not just in Washington, but as a district.
Sure.
And because it's not possible to do this investment in every school. It would be great if we had money to do that, but it shows that we have to build capacity within our district to be able to do it ourselves.
And that was the expectation we signed on to Eric initially.
And I think.
That it would be, it would carry over to other schools.
And I'm going to need, and I want to learn more about what that looks like.
Yes, no, I think that's reasonable.
I think, I think some of what it exposes, and rightfully so, are the things that aren't working. And I know that's, when we're here promoting something, to say, hey, these are the blemishes that were uncovered, that might not be the popular thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. One thing we discovered was that our system for really looking at student assessment data and analyzing it and looking at that in teams, it wasn't as robust as we wanted it to be. We already talked a little bit about the, the pacing being an issue. We've also seen that we want to make sure that our, our different teams from our, our departments within the district office are as responsive as possible. Everybody is doing hard work, trying hard, but sometimes that lack of synergistic effect and, and thinking about things from a customer service, we're support service for schools, that's something we can always improve on.
So for me, investing in, sorry.
Okay.
Investing in the professional development and, and leadership for our staff, making our people who we put in front of our kids better, will always be a priority. And if, if this is what you're saying is the, the best use of those dollars in order to make all teachers and all administrators in our district better, then I can, I can support that, because that is a tremendous resource, investing in our people, so that our kids can have a better experience. So that's, you know, what I want to keep in my mind, and if this is what's best, then, then I can support that.
Are you ready? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so going back to you, I talked about that you were concerned about investment. And if we go back to last proposal, where we were given testimonials in order to think about this, this proposal of three ninety-four, all of those schools, I, I did actually look into this quite a bit last time, and all of the schools that were given to us with testimonials of, we used AIR, and, and by the way, it was an average of three years to see any change. Every one of those schools was grant funded. It was not coming out of the general fund, and I think that's important to note. When we're talking about tight budgets, tight budgets, so tight that we literally had to go into the pockets of our staff recently for the next year. I still have questions about where we're getting this money. But when we talk about the tax dollars and this, and the amount of money that we're going to spend on this, it's not, and I'm going to try to be as, I'm going to try to be as fair and pragmatic about this as I can. But it's not like going to the Mayo Clinic, because typically, if you have, if you're going to the Mayo Clinic, you have some great insurance. So you're, you're not, you're not probably going into your own pocket even that much to do that. You're, and you're definitely not going into the taxpayer's pocket. So we can't really use that comparison. I have some questions about the transparency around, because I know this was something even you, Andrew, had said last, last year, at this time, when we were going to vote on that three hundred ninety-four thousand. Your, your deal breaker was that there would be transparency throughout the process. And there just hasn't been. Especially, I don't know, it was like, it was pretty good, and then it just kind of dropped off. I'm not sure what happened. I'm not sure why that happened. But two reports ago, I believe, we sat here, went through a report, but we didn't have a handout. I asked about that, not sure why. When it was mentioned that there was something put into a confidential document, it wasn't, maybe it wasn't intentional, intentional that it was put in the document, but what was not happening was that that report was not public. And that was literally, Andrew, your criteria to vote for that. I don't know, I, I wouldn't forget that, especially considering asking for more money. And so now, it's still not out there. We didn't even cover it. So maybe it wasn't intentional to go into a confidential document, but we didn't cover that. I mean, at the end of the day, the public hasn't seen the April report.
So I guess I'd see.
I'm actually not done, though.
Sure.
Thanks. And then today, we get to the board table. This is the first time I've seen this. I didn't get this over the weekend. I don't know if any of you did. Did you?
I did not.
No, did you?
No.
Okay. So this is actually not for public consumption either today, other than going through the meeting, which most people just, you know, they're not typically going to sit through all this and watch it. They also would like probably to have it with them. So I have just some questions about our commitment to taxpayers. They're giving us a lot of money, and we're kind of willy-nilly throughout this transparency process, just in general, especially with information.
If I can interject for just a moment.
Go ahead.
We have this because I called John this morning and asked him for more specific data.
Okay.
And had we had those meetings, we would have addressed that at that meeting.
Okay, we keep saying we.
Right, but I'm just saying that that's, so that's why we have it.
So we, okay, but you're missing the point. We are not paying for this. And I, I feel like this is like deja vu from last year. We are not paying for this. We can have this, right? Sure. But at the end of the day, again, the public still doesn't have that, even though you asked for it, and I'm, I appreciate that, but it's still not out there. And I'm, I'm going to be that person, because I think it's easy to forget where this money is coming from. It's not grant funded, it's out of our general fund. I don't even know where this money is coming from. I'd love to know what that looks like. I have a lot of concerns as well about the sustainability. When we talk about all of this investment in, because what this is, is very, very expensive professional development. That's what it is. You know, you had made a mention that this is something that the, the kids there deserve, the staff deserves. Well, you know, as mentioned, all kids deserve this. And there is a lot of discussion in district-wide from other schools and staff who are calling this institutional neglect. And that is a culture and climate problem for your district. Because that's a lot of money, not grant funded, put into one school with, I mean, okay. But the reality is, the, the taxpayers don't have access to that. They also didn't, they're not paying for that. They're paying for, what you're shooting for is the results on the forward exam. And we don't know what that is. And you continue to say it's preliminary, and I agree. So I don't know how anyone could ever throw their vote to this if they don't know if we got our money the first time around. Because, you know, anyone could throw these, these numbers together. What we're looking at is something that's tangible for tax dollars, and that is the forward exam. I'm not a fan of testing, but this, this has been sold to us because of that. So I'm not sure how, it's definitely premature, it's preliminary. But going back to the sustainability, I'm just all over the place, because I have so many thoughts on this.
Do you want him to respond to anything?
No, I don't.
It's.
I'm actually responding to what he said.
Following, so that I can respond to each of the.
Um, not yet. So one thing that I, I also believe is really important, and you've asked it, other people have asked it, is the sustainability of this investment. So we are training and, 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 you know, supporting teachers and, and staff. But let's be real, there, that's not a sustainable body right now. So how is this investment sustainable if the staff isn't sustainable? And that's my concern. Because, you know, you talked about, we could do this job. I mean, you were a superintendent, I would assume, you could probably have some expertise there. There are, there are, there's human resources in our own district, I believe, that could do what they're doing. But you're, the difference you said tonight, and I hadn't heard this before, but it, it needs to be accelerated. But what's happening, from what I've been told, I've had a lot of conversations, meetings with teachers there, it's the acceleration that is actually destructive to the climate and culture. I know you're saying that it's positive, but the reality is, that's, that's not what I'm hearing at all. And I'm going to be that voice today to make sure that it's not drowned, because it's important that these people are heard. That is not the experience that people are having. It very well could be because of the acceleration. Okay. So, you know, and I know the conversation has been that, well, some people just, you know, they won't be able to handle it. But that training then goes out the door when they leave, and then we have new staff. So how sustainable it is, is it when you have continuous people taking that and leaving, is, is a really big concern of mine. Because what we're doing with this needs to be sustainable for it to be valuable. And I've not heard anything that tells me how it is going to be sustainable, especially when I know that the staff isn't sustainable. It's not. We have, that, that's, that's just, that's the truth. So I can, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about.
Can they respond?
Um, I'm almost done.
Okay.
Thank you. It, it's almost like it's just a given, right? If you look at this, it's around thirty-three thousand dollars a month, and they're going to come thirty-four times in the next year. Right? That's what it was. So they, did they come about that this, this school year?
Thirty-four times for site visit by math instructor, thirty-four visits by.
Literacy.
The literacy instructors, twelve times for leadership coaching, and then additional days for some of the.
Throughout the school year?
Right, correct.
Okay. So that's what we get for around, we got for about thirty-three thousand dollars a month. What we don't really know, though, is, do we have sustainable staff with that knowledge? Enough to continue going?
Very important point.
Um, do we have what we're looking for, for, you know, the improvements, the growth? We don't, it's preliminary. We don't have that. So for, for us to vote on this in good faith, knowing, again, how we went into, because of a budget deficit, projected budget deficit, there was a lot of conversation about, we have to make cuts, we have to do this. What are we actually going to use to pay for this? And what are we not paying for? Because there, there have been conversations about transportation that's been cut in the last couple of months. And there's also been issues with other schools, saying, we have needs. Why, why are they getting all of this? So I, I don't know if it's just, there needs to be, you need to find a better way to demonstrate or explain to these other schools that, you know, we're, this isn't, and this is the word that I was given, institutional neglect. It is that we, for whatever reason you have, you know, if you have a lot of principal turnover and a teacher that resigns at the board table, then you, you too can have this money out of the general fund. That's what they're talking about. Sorry, that's what they're talking about.
No, no, I find your, I find your.
She's fine, go ahead, react, respond.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I'd like to start with the first, the first part about the purpose of the work session. This has been very important and great discussion, and I appreciate all the, that everybody's contributed and talked about what they need to hear, because that's really what the intent of a work session is. These documents will be posted and, and put out there for the community. We have a couple of weeks now to provide input, and, and that really is how these meetings were initially intended to be, to give the board the opportunity to tell us what else they would like to talk about and need in these discussions, so that we can post that. So these, this will all be posted. I think the clarity that you brought up, Christine, about what does this mean, is going to have to be with it as well. I think, you know, I think as, as a community member myself and a taxpayer, I'm also very interested in wanting to make sure that our investments are well. As, as a superintendent, obviously, my priority are our students. And I think Eric said it extremely well about the investment in professional development for the people who matter most in front of the children. And to your point, having just shared a, a document that was shared with me, written by a pediatrician, who's also developmental, thinking about the importance of recognizing what small children need, and that investment is, is a clearly, clearly critical and a priority as well. So I think all of this is a really important discussion and feedback. I think that the, the sustainability piece is something we have been talking very deeply about. I think this is, this is an important conversation, a critical conversation at this time. And I know I'm going to ask John and Judy to talk about the sustainability. It's been a conversation that we've talked about. And also, to your point, Rhonda, the sustainability is, is deeply, and has to be deeply embedded in systems as well, as well. It can't just be in people. And so we've talked about that as well, and processes and procedures, which we already know we're seeing significant change in our hiring practices, as one example. But I'll let you speak from there.
No, and I appreciate, Ms. Sitnikow, the, the passion and, and every, from all board members around making sure that we're very careful with our decision-making here. This is a, it is an expensive investment, and I think we have to be thoughtful of, of the sustainability piece, as well as how does it have system impact throughout the rest of our schools. When we look at some of the, the other grant-funded opportunities for, for partnering, generally those are through taxpayer-supported grants through Title and things of that nature as well. So there is a taxpayer portion of that. But it is, this was a conscious choice. It wasn't, it wasn't a, something, a lot of times when there's turnaround, it's something that's forced by the state or forced by the federal government. It's not necessarily a choice of the community and a choice of the school district. And when we had our, the work over the past year and a half or more related to, to Washington Middle School in moving forward, I remember when we first brought forward the information about turnaround, it was because there was such a strong sense of urgency for making sure that we were doing everything we possibly could to move Washington forward. And so it was from that response that, that Dr. Langenfeld and, and the rest of the team and I worked together to identify what would be the best way for us to have that sense of urgency, that impact, for, for something that was really essentially a big hairy problem that we hadn't experienced to this extent before, and it was, it's something that, that many urban districts struggle with. And what we found was that the research was there for us to work with turnaround partnership. And that's, that's really where that came from, was a decision by the school board with input from the community around that sense of urgency to focus on Washington. I hear the same things about wanting to make sure we're supporting all schools, and how come Washington gets more than others, and what does this mean? I. I know that we have to have success at Washington for, for the district to be successful and for the community to be successful. And that is an imperative for, for me along with the support for the other schools. Those are, those are critical pieces. Regarding the transparency and, and the way that we've shared our reports, we've taken direction on the sharing of reports from, from the board and that we were doing them on a monthly basis. And we're finding that, that the, the principal and the team were probably spending ten to twenty hours at least in preparation for those reports and we wanted to make sure that that time was spent on, on focusing on the kids. We do, the need for transparency and the need for, for scrutiny is critical. But it was through the feedback from the board that those, those reports could be something that could be delivered within our, our weekly messaging rather than a formal presentation of the board. We would be glad to, to have a monthly presentation if that's, if that's what we would, if that's what the board would like. But that, that's where the, the change occurred during that time. So those are, are things that we consider. You've given us a number of things to consider and again, this was meant as a work session. Uh, there were a number of questions and concerns that came up over the weekend and were relayed to, to me today and throughout the weekend. And this, this report tonight was really just an attempt to, to address some of those in a, in a preliminary fashion, some of the concerns. And also, as I stated in, in the, the first piece, that this was an opportunity for us to gather, not answer all the questions, but gather questions for coming back. And I, I look forward to the opportunity to come back and to share additional depth. Because your position is not one that I envy at this point. It's the decision-making around what is, what is the next step in the future for Washington Middle School? Are we going to continue with the support for the accelerated turnaround or do we want to invest in another way? And I serve at the superintendent's pleasure and at the board's pleasure in making sure that we're able to, to support the will of the board and the will of the community.
Rhonda.
Okay, I just want to, I'd like a clarification on taking direction from the board as far as the, the transparency on the monthly reports. I don't remember ever having a conversation where we had a consensus. I mean, I, I don't know if I've missed any actual board meetings, but I don't remember a, a conversation where we actually said, we don't need this information public anymore. Uh, because it hasn't been every time. We don't need a handout with the report. Those are two things that I definitely would never have agreed to and I don't remember that conversation. Anyone remember that? I mean, I, I will say this, I will say this though. I, I didn't think it was necessary to have the principal come to the, to the board table and do that. That's what I remember, but I don't remember giving direction personally that these reports would be just maybe there, maybe not, not consistent. Because it is a fact that they haven't been public every time. And it, you know, there was one that was, was marked confidential, but it, on the reverse, it wasn't actually public then either. It was, somebody had the report and it went somewhere and where it didn't go was to the public. And that's not a direction that I remember ever giving, nor would I ever. So I don't know if you remember that?
Andrew?
So I think, I think maybe what we need is a, I mean, I, we did, we did say that the reports would be available to the public and I don't, I don't know that any of us really, other, other than the statement that we didn't mean the principal presenting each month, we, we were clear that we didn't mean that. I think, I think we just need some definition around, and I, I don't know what the correct answer is, but if we say something like, these reports will be public, I think, I assume that to mean that they would be publicly available. I think something, generally something sent to the, the board is publicly available. Sometimes we put things on, I mean, would it be, uh, we generally wouldn't put something on Neptune unless it was a discussion item or action for that particular month, but that could be a place for a repository of an ongoing public document. Maybe, maybe that's the correct answer, I just don't know what it, what it is. But if, I mean, I think, I think there was some, there was an understanding that there'd be a public report monthly and, uh, but that's a fair point. Where do you go to, to get it if you're interested?
And can I also add though, why would we have to direct that, right? We are literally taking a large amount of tax dollars from the public. It should be a no-brainer, we should just be like, what do you need to see? We're going to just give you what you need. Every month, it should be a priority, we shouldn't have to direct it. I can't imagine, it would only make it easier for the public to swallow this, right? This, this expenditure if we were actually more transparent with the reports. I feel like that's just, that's just kind of a no-brainer to me.
This seems to be the, uh, the critical point on transparency and I think it will be good for us to go back and look at some of the, the past board meetings and we can take a look to see. If it was a misunderstanding on my part that it needed to be just submitted as an electronic document that was shared.
It's easy.
Then, then that is, I will fully own that and I apologize to the public and to the board as a whole.
But does anyone else remember? Because I mean, we're all, there's a lot of us sitting here, what do you remember? Anyone?
I don't remember any, I don't remember any specific conversation.
And I think there was.
Some discussion with regard to whether or not we needed to have Cindy agree every.
Well, I think we can all agree, we don't want you all spending ten to twenty hours a month preparing board reports. I mean, that is ludicrous.
But I think it's remedying, you're going to go to, you're going to.
Sure.
But it is an issue that, again, we didn't mean for the April one to be confidential. The March one didn't have a handout or the April, the May one was confidential, the April one didn't have a handout, right? And so the last time the public had a public-facing report would have been March on this? I don't.
So this, but this is the April, this is the April copy.
This is April.
So the March would have been shared and we'll be glad to share May and we can even, I, I think we could come back with that.
I'm just saying it's been two and a half months now since there's been a document.
I'm trying to problem solve here too and put other pieces together and I, I extend the same apology if we didn't understand what we were supposed to do accurately and the April one was a, was certainly not supposed to be. None of these documents have been or have ever been not public. So then the question is, should there be a repository just that says AIR Washington?
Sure.
I mean, that's not hard, so we can put those back and archive them because they are available. Some are, I mean, they're hard to find if they're online in a board meeting too.
Right.
I would get behind that.
Yeah, so if that's, if that's really what would be most helpful, then we certainly can do that because we have them and I would assume you have them somewhere as well.
And I think that would be great, we can share the, that and also make sure that we're posting our annual end-of-year report with, with that. As, I'm certain that that's something you want shared publicly and that's something that we'll be glad to, to put together. I think you've given us a lot of different things that we can ensure that we'll be at it.
That's okay, go ahead.
I just have a very quick question, sorry, I know we're like trying to wrap this up. I, it's my understanding that eighteen nineteen funding for the AIR, for AIR did not include work around climate culture, correct?
Not as specific to academics because we were focusing more on the academic piece.
Right, right, but I'm just making sure that, okay. For nineteen twenty, it seems that, that is part of the proposal that AIR is going, that's part of the investment. Am I understanding that correctly?
It will be included to, to an extent through the leadership coaching.
Okay.
And then we're also looking at what systemic pieces we can make sure we're linking to related to our own support within our departments as well as through AIR. We've been in touch with their, their, and I'm forgetting the name of the, the group, but it's the, the culture and engagement arm of AIR.
So that's a shift from eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty.
That will be something that will continue within some of our work.
Thank you for that, just making sure I understood that correctly.
Okay, Rhonda?
Okay, I don't think this was answered, but hello, hi, hello, okay. Where is this money coming from? Where is this, where is this two hundred and eighty-six thousand additional dollars coming from in the budget? Because I just remember a lot of conversation about cuts, budgets are tight, deficits, all of that. So where is that coming from? Where could we find it?
It's, it's something that we've designated because we believe it's, it's critical for us as a district. And if we think about, this is something that's raising the level of universal practice, not just at Washington, but throughout the district. We're focusing on how we're teaching and teaching better and we're focusing on how we serve students' social, emotional learning needs and how we can do that better as a system. And if we're able to enhance not only at Washington, but throughout the district to an extent, there will be less need as well for interventionists and coaches and things of that nature. So really it's, it's intended that as we raise the level overall, there will be less need for safety nets for kids that are falling through the cracks because we'll be preventing cracks to begin with. As far as where the funding is coming from for this coming year, that's something that's been built within the teaching and learning budget within our professional learning. Still within that budget, we have a significant decrease overall of the, the professional learning budget that we have within teaching and learning. This is something that has been identified by us as something that's valuable. Yet overall, we have a reduction because we realize it is a time of fiscal responsibility and if we're asking everybody to tighten their belts, we have to make sure that our departmental belt is tightened as well.
But to that, right? We don't have money built in for taking, you know, reducing the, the pressure in some of these class sizes that we have. That doesn't seem to be a priority.
I, I would disagree, I think that we've, we've invested multiple millions of dollars of additional funding towards staffing despite a decreasing enrollment, so as the class size is lowering, we're investing, I want to say six million dollars in the past special education and special education supports in addition to increases in paraprofessionals and regular education teachers. All the while, while our, our student population is decreasing. But I don't want this to be an argument about, do we fund the teacher or do we fund the improvement effort? It, there, there are, we do have to consider those variables and it really is, that's, that is board governance of deciding where do budget items fall.
It's not an argument, it's actually, it's a conversation that's very.
Oh, I didn't mean it as.
No, I'm just going to, just, it's, it's not an argument, it's actually, I mean, I don't, I don't just wake up in the morning and just want to say all these things. I, I'm literally taking voices from staff in the district who are saying these exact things. So it's actually not an argument, it's a concern, it's sometimes, it is a deal breaker if I'm going to stay and work in this district. It's literally, it is, is a, it is a live, ongoing conversation that's happening and it's a question that I have to answer as a board member. You decided to spend this much money. I could have had someone coming into my science class and I could have had some relief there. There could have been better integrity in, in the lab work. But now that money is not there. So I don't really know how to answer that.
I just want to clarify that, and I know the, the gentleman who spoke at the open forum said that we could have higher social workers. But this is a one-time expense, it's not a, a yearly expense, it's not a sustainable thing. I do think we need to be mindful and more deliberate about when we're using the information that we're gleaning from the AIR process. We need to let the other people in the district know that, where this came from and that this is a benefit of what AIR has done at Washington as we move forward and use it in other schools. People need to know that this information has been gleaned from this process and people need to know that what they're learning from AIR is relevant stuff. So it's not stuff that, you know, we're not looking for teachers to just do more work. It has to be relevant work, they have to see the benefit of what they're being asked to do.
Sure, and I really welcome the, the discussion and dialogue we've had tonight. I didn't mean to characterize it as, as argument. Sometimes when we're pushing for something and we're wanting something and we're bringing it as a proposal, sometimes it tends to.
I'll let you know when we're arguing, we're not there yet.
Exactly, but really this comes, it's, it's the board's decision and I think that the board has to come down to a decision at some point. Our, we want to make sure we provide as much information as possible about our proposal, but indeed it is a proposal. And it's a proposal that the board can consider in the scope of, how do we want to continue at Washington? Do we want to continue with the turnaround support or do we want to consider spending the resource elsewhere? And really, in, in the end, we will continue to support Washington and we will continue to have turnaround process in place. The acceleration might slow, but we will always be there supporting at Washington and elsewhere and we really appreciate the dialogue.
Is there any more information that board members need, Brenda?
No, I just have some things I want to say.
That's okay.
You can ask your question first.
The, just, if, if there's anything else, any other information that you would like John and Judy to provide us as we move forward and continue the discussion on this? Let, either speak now after Brenda because I called on her first. Okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, so I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that have been said, especially for the benefit of, you know, Eric, Christina, who weren't here last year when we went on through all of this conversation. One of the things when we talked about culture, climate, when, last, a year ago when we were talking about this, I think the emphasis on professional development to improve instruction was also, has been shown to decrease behaviors in classrooms because students are more engaged. And so that was the, the reason why, you know, they, they put the investment in, in improving, making sure that the instruction was very engaging and now turning toward, you know, looking more directly at culture and climate. Regarding the NCEs, I do know that the NCE scores predict the forward exam. And so when we look at, we look at STAR testing, that is an indicator of how students will, will perform on the forward exam. And then the concern about teachers leaving after they've had professional development. And that's always our concern, I mean, we have that in every single school that we provide professional development in. And I think it's not, for me, not a reason not to continue providing that professional development, but every school district, you know, invests in teachers and then for various reasons, you know, the teachers may not stay. But I think it goes back again to the, the, the culture of the school. When you invest in professional development, you're investing in the, the collective skill set of teachers. And just because you lose one teacher doesn't mean you lose that percentage of, of the skill set because a new teacher comes in and are surrounded by teachers that have been trained and have that, that skill set. Because we provide professional development, I mean, our IB, we provide almost three hundred thousand dollars, you know, for their professional development and in that case, I would say the, you know, the same, the same concern is what happens when a teacher leaves. But that's not something that we can very easily, you know, fix that problem. I just think we need to continue investing in our teachers and if all of us in the country are investing in our teachers and the teacher we get to replace the teacher that's left is hopefully comes with, you know, also improved skills from the professional development they got.
But to that, to that point though, um, this is literally like, I mean, and we're, this is year two. So if we go to another year, the average AIR proposal that's out there that was met and, you know, they looked through the testimonials that we were given, was, it was over a million dollars when it was all said and done. So that's, that's an entirely different level of professional development. You better have good retention if you're going to have that kind of investment. And we're not talking about just normal, atypical professional development. It's also, I'm sorry, it's a lot of pressure on the teachers as well. And I, no one's ever said this, but it's, it's as if it's their fault that things are happening the way they are. And that's also been something that's been shared with me and, and I wanted to just say that out loud because that is how they're feeling. That it's all up to them, now we have to, you know, we can't leave, you've, you've been invested in. There's a lot of angst with that, I've been told as well. So it's not the same as professional development throughout the district, we absolutely cannot even pretend it is.
No, but the compare, comparison with IB is. I mean, that's a comparable investment. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Michelle? I certainly appreciate this discussion and I know that.
I certainly appreciate this discussion. And I know that John and, and Judy have worked very hard with, with the team. And I've been part of some of those discussions, but certainly working. I think that the piece that we keep trying to put into perspective is that we recognize that we have 42 soon-to-be 43 schools. And that's why we take this very seriously. And we know that the board has a very important decision because it is a balance between class size. And even if we provide significant rationale, it doesn't impact directly maybe a classroom teacher in another school. And that may not be, you know, an answer that they're looking for. The reality is, at the end of the day, I'll say it, and I've said it before, and I'm going to say it again, we have a shared imperative. We want to serve children and we want to serve children well so that they have what they need to be successful. And we've been fortunate these last couple of days to see the results of the investment in children who've walked across the stage, beginning with Manoka, 145 graduates that wouldn't have been there a couple of years ago, that the board made an important investment decision to go there. And that was a, that was a big decision and it was, and I'm sure challenging at that time. In addition, we had another 40-some graduates who walked the stage yesterday who were part of another program that the board had to make an important decision because sometimes equity and, and dollars don't always equate. And so this is, this will be one of those important decisions that the board will have to make. And we will bring back everything that you've, that we can, that you've asked for. I would say that that conversation continues so that, and that's what the discussion at a work session is intended to do, is to open those doors. Again, I think the meetings that are missed will help improve this. But again, we are about continuous improvement. We are about children. And we care deeply about Washington. We care about all of our schools' children. And that's something that everybody at this table, I think, can agree with as well. So moving forward, we'll bring back that information.
Yes.
And again, I appreciate your work and, and appreciate all the really important discussion at this table tonight. It's been very good.
We appreciate the time and attention of the board. Thank you for having this courageous conversation.
Good discourse.
Any public comment?
We would just like to be clear about where our public documents can be about, or if you can take AIR.
Betty, could you please come up to the, I can't hear you.
That's a, that's a really good question. And I'm, I'm going to look to Communications and see where the best place. We'll look into it.
We would just like to know where the public can find all the public documents about AIR when we go home. Not tonight, but I'm saying, I don't want to wait for two more weeks to find out where they are.
No, no, we'll get that before that.
Right now, right now, they're in Neptune.
But you'd have to know the dates of-
You'd have to search for them.
Pardon?
That's not all of them. They're missing a bunch.
Just one.
Well, we can, we can compile them if you want to go to there.
Yeah.
We can put them in a Google Doc.
We can put them in a Google folder for you, Betty.
A what?
A Google folder, like a folder they can open.
Why?
Because we don't have access.
No, it would be open.
Google, email, Gmail?
No.
Google, no.
Betty?
I don't open any. Who doesn't? If it's forwarded to anybody, you have the link, you can access it.
We will, we will see what, we'll figure it out and let you know. Can we?
What do you mean?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And that concludes our portion of the work session.
All right, we're going to take a break, just for five minutes. So come back when you can.
We're good to go.
Oh, we're good. All right.
Thank you, Jean.
Thanks, Jean. All right, next is our organizational support work session. That'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, thank you. So under discussion items, business and finance, we have none. Under human resources, we have superintendent search process. And Eric, you have some information on that?
Yeah, so I sent a document that was essentially just some, some thoughts and information meant to be a conversation starter around, one, kind of, what would we be looking for in, in the next superintendent? And some different things to consider. And if anyone has any reactions to, it's actually the second doc, second page of that document. But just, you know, what are we looking for in a leader? What are we looking for in a superintendent? And then what are the unique needs of our district? So different things to consider. The first page is just a rough draft of a timeline. Again, this was just sort of in my head, best guess. If somebody had other feedback or a different suggestion, I would want to talk about that. Really, today, what I'd, I'd like to at least leave today's discussion with is around that, that first June-July because that's where we are right now, around board member listening sessions. So once we hire, if, if we choose to hire and when we go with a search firm, they'll lead a lot of that process. And it's meant to sort of separate the board from that, both for internal candidates and also just to be able to make sure that we're, we're reaching out and finding the best people possible. But before that, I could see a lot of benefit in, in the board being involved in some of the, the community listening sessions for a lot of different reasons, which I won't get into now. So I personally, and I, I don't know if other people feel this way, and it doesn't have to be a consensus. If, if we do some of that work or facilitated or are just involved, I don't know exactly what that looks like. I don't know how that comes with like posting meetings if we're out doing that work. So that might come into play here. But doing some legwork before bringing on a search firm, I think, would be important. So curious to hear any and all reactions. I did provide two links to articles. Again, just things that I found that I, I thought were most valuable in some of the research that I did over the last two weeks. So.
Any questions or comments? Brenda?
Actually, a quick question from Melissa. The board, if we were to do board member listening sessions, would we have to, if it was, I mean, are you thinking of this, like, whole board, two board members?
Yeah, yeah, to maybe one or two board, because if we want to reach the most people, maybe one or two board members is just what I was thinking, but.
And so then, what the requirements would be for posting? I mean, I assume if we have our own personal, you know, individual conversation with, with people, would that require a posting?
You run into someone on the street and you're having a conversation with someone?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No.
But if we set up an official-
I, I would, I hope I gave the right answer on that.
But I mean, but, or even just, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, meeting with somebody for something else and, and I ask them-
Yep.
-a question about-
If I could, I, I wasn't sure the dr, I didn't, didn't receive Eric's document. So I wasn't sure the direction of tonight's discussion. The superintendent's search is pretty highly scripted with respect to what has to be posted. And so I, I would like to be able to go back and just lay that all out. I know, my experience has been working with a search firm. And as Eric recognized, the purpose of that search firm, I, I'm going to tell you, I, I've done superintendent's search and internally to not have a search firm. It's, it's very, very difficult, given the amount of, and Sandy may, Sandy's done more than I have, the amount of requirements and just logistics and all that sort of thing. So with that caveat, I, I can go back and then look through my resources. We're going to be having a transition in human resources, you know, all of that.
I, I wonder too about, totally get all of that in play. And I, I don't know maybe if we're going to have that discussion now about a search firm. What if we, you know, if I know of a community leader and I said, hey, I would, if you would, other person would be willing to get some people together and do something on your own, whether I attended or not, I don't know if that changes the answer, but I would like you to reach out to people that you're connected with in the community, ask some basic questions, and then bring me that feedback. So maybe I'm not involved in it, but I, I'm specifically targeting maybe a population or a neighborhood or something like that. You know, like, let's say a neighborhood association. So if I went to the neighborhood association president and said, hey, this is something that we'd like some feedback on at your next neighborhood association meeting, could you ask these three or four questions and then report back to me on what you hear? That, that, that's what I'm envisioning. I'm not-
So what, I, I think what would be helpful, you and I talked as to what you're envisioning, and then I-
And I don't know if that's what everyone else is envisioning, but-
I, I would hate to though, because there is a science to this too, that, and that's why search firms are search firms. So I would hate, I would like to hear what you're thinking. And I know Terry was here. Just so that we're not, there, there's a method to the madness with respect to superintendent searches and, and that sort of thing. So if you and I want to talk and then we can work too and see what you're looking at with respect to legal requirements and those sorts of things, that would be probably helpful.
Christina?
I would like to be a part of that conversation because I'm really just curious about the process. And I'd love to learn more about what you've done in the past. So I don't know if we could set something, we'd have to post it obviously. But I, I, I think there would be value in that if other board members wanted to schedule maybe a separate time to do a little bit of a debrief of what the history is, to get a little bit more into the weeds with you and to flush this out. Because I think this looks great. But I agree, one of the things I was thinking, Eric, was like, community engagement, was like, how do we ensure that folks who have deep trust and relationships within communities are a part of the, not necessarily maybe the facilitation, but are the ones inviting folks into the room? So we're not expecting people to come to us. And like, how do we identify who those people are? And I don't know, there's just so many moving, different moving pieces in. So would you be open to that?
And all of that is part of a search, that you go to the community, you go to various different groups.
So would you be open to doing, would, would you suggest that maybe we like take this to a separate meeting to flush out those details? Or what would your expert, what would your opinion be?
Sure. And I'd like to involve Sandy too because we can pull the history of what we've done here and look at the various different groups. I mean, clearly, we ended up with a good candidate this time. So I think that we've done a, a nice job in, in matching the needs to what the district is. So I'd, I'd like to at least have a chance to study what we've done in the past and the groups we've consulted and, and look at that.
When we met with the board, with the search firm, once they select the search firm, that's when the board meets with the search firm and they develop what groups, what stakeholders, the guiding questions and all of the pieces of that.
So Sandy, are you saying that the, the first step is to, for the board to choose that firm? And that they-
Usually what happened, the last two I've been involved in that's-
And then that they help facilitate what we're, what we're looking for and that feeds out into the community. Okay.
I guess what, what I just want to make sure to avoid, and maybe the, the board-led part of it. But if, and I guess this is a good question for a search, for, for the search committee, is to, if a search committee facilitates and says, we want to meet with, or get the voice of the Hispanic population. The Hispanic population looks at the search firm and never, has never heard of them before and isn't comfortable and says, well, I'm not going to participate in that. And then we don't feel like we've engaged a certain population of the community or a certain subset that I would value. And so I want to make sure, and again, maybe they can help us with this, but that, that we're thinking from a cultural lens on how we get everyone's feedback. Simply sending out a survey, getting some responses and say, well, we asked everyone's feedback. Well, that, I, I don't put a lot of value on that. So-
That's not my experience.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe that's, that's the case.
Sandy, did you do an RFP for your search firm? Yep. So I think really the first step is developing that RFP for the search firm. And then-
And I've got Jeanne already working on that.
Okay.
Okay, so you already have-
And, and I think what happened last time, and I asked this question, but that we did the RFP and then we picked the top three candidates. And then we actually, as the board, got to interview them. So, and then being able to ask questions and things of that nature. Of the search firm, right. So maybe the questions that I'm asking now are questions that we ask for them. And if we want an opportunity to be involved in that, the search firm can help us with it.
They send representatives from their companies to meet with us and off, and tell us, like, their, their menu of services and what, okay.
And I mentioned in the, and Sandy and I talked about this, that it's no secret to these search firms that we're going to be going through this process. So they're ready to go. They're, they're waiting for the RFP to be released and they're going to respond to it. So.
What's the turnaround time from create, I'm sorry, were you going to say something?
No.
Creating the RFP, putting it out, and then moving that forward with interviews?
It took about two weeks.
Yeah.
It's a pretty quick turnaround.
Because they're all ready.
Yeah.
They do. They know who's looking.
They're like, oh, Green Bay's going to be looking for some time.
They're watching for the RFP.
Two weeks.
I'm wondering if we can, I'd, I'd be curious if a search firm is interested in being hired earlier than what would necessarily make sense with our timeline so that we would then have a little bit more to- because we have the luxury of time, that we, so that we would have a little bit more time to establish, you know, what are our goals in terms of getting community feedback, you know? And then also, we would interview them and ask them, you know, how do you see helping us be able to make sure we get to the people we want to get to?
But, but because we have the, the luxury of time, I want to make sure we do it right.
Yeah.
I don't want to all of a sudden be like, oh, we had all this time, wish we would have done this, this, and this. Which is why, you know, at the last meeting, I said, hey, can we start talking about this? Because we do have a lot of time, which is great. Let's take advantage of it.
But maybe that would, you know, if you are, I don't know, can just kind of poll a couple of search firms and just say, what if we were to hire you in, you know, mid-July, even though, you know, we wouldn't really hit the ground running until October?
We could add that, Brenda, into the questions for the RFP.
Yeah.
And have it be a formal response.
Because we could-
But if we, yeah, that's true. Because then the RFP process doesn't have to be fast.
Right.
We can, we can, oops, sorry. Have a, say sorry to your computer. We can have, yeah, that's true. We can have that luxury of-
I prefer to start, I'm speaking on behalf of Terry, but it would be good to start now, getting that RFP out during the summer process so that we have the, the luxury of time. I think you're in a better off position as a board and can be more deliberate and intentional with your community information meetings and gathering input from the community. And gives you the time to make sure you've hit all of those groups, especially given how busy our community is.
What does the process look like from receiving 10 RF, 10 responses to picking?
What we did the last couple of times is we had a small board work group that people screened the copies or the, the people that submitted. And it was probably about 10, eight to 10 companies that submitted. And then the, they used a rubric on who to, who to select, like the top three. Or I think we interviewed three last time, if I remember right. Then, then the full board interviews those three or four, whatever you want to do.
Sure.
That's what we did the last time.
Sandy, do you remember, just off the top of your head, were those companies mostly from outside the state? Okay.
There might have been a couple that were inside the state, but most of them are outside the state.
And did the, did the district go with someone from out of state eventually?
Most recent ones were from Iowa?
Iowa.
Yeah.
Other questions?
So I'm wondering if, you can think about this, but, but if you want to put this back on our agenda in two weeks and the board could give feedback on what we would want in the RFP. And then, and then move forward with the RFP. That way, you have all, everybody's input in terms of, you know, what we would hope.
The RFP was very simple the last time because these companies all have-
Yeah, it's pretty formulated.
Yeah, it's already, you know, so they've already got this all ready to go, probably. So the, the RFP was quite simple. It was like, I don't know, eight questions or something like that, Jeanne, if I remember right. So Eric, you can look at it and we can-
Yeah. I mean, and I, I would gain more from wanting to sit down across the table and ask my personal questions than to have them, take the time to write a formal response.
I think the interviews were like an hour each.
Yeah.
And actually, to your point, the board can offer interview questions.
Yes.
Things they'd like to be asked at the interview, rather than what they want included in the RFP.
Yeah.
So would you like us to proceed with formalizing the RFP?
Yeah, I think so. And does it sound like the sooner we get that out, the better? What are we?
Right.
Yeah, we have nothing to lose, I think. Yeah.
Because, yeah, once we do the RFP, we don't have to hire them the next day.
Right.
The summer is going to take some time.
We can let them know we're interested because there are going to be other districts looking for superintendents as well. And we can at least get them lined up.
So, yeah, let's get the RFP ready to go and start that process.
And to your point about going to, like, to meet with Hispanic population at, like, St. Wilbur's or something like that, we don't need to have, we can do that. We can, you know, we don't need to, we need to be, we can be sensitive to who should present.
Who does the process?
Right, right.
Sure. But they, okay.
Yeah. As we get closer to having an actual, a meet the candidate kind of thing, then they can kind of lead that-
Yeah.
-process.
Okay. Okay.
But for the individual groups, we can do that.
Okay, anything else?
All right, and then we have under discussion, public comment, we have the Green Bay, first we have the Green Bay Safe Walk and Bike Draft Plan. Good evening, I want to be respectful of your time. This is just a short visit to one of many I'll be making in the next two weeks to various public meetings. To just kind of refresh your memory on our process toward completion of the Safe Routes Project, Safe Walk and Bike Green Bay. There will be a meeting on the 10th that will go to the Planning Commission at Green Bay City Hall at 6:00 PM in Room 604 on June 10th, and on the 17th we'll be back here. And on the 18th we will, we'll be in City Council in the Council Chamber at 6:00 PM as well. So those are the other public meetings that are coming up and I will be at all of them if you want to spend some time together. The, the proposal or the presentation that the consultant tool design is going to be making at those meetings on the 17th and 18th is going to be fairly similar, but not the same. It's going to have a background of the plan and the team that was created to guide our plan to completion. The planning process that we went through, the plan recommendations, the implementation that is anticipated and next steps after the plan would be accepted. The slight variation would be that plan recommendations part. For the school board, we would be primarily focusing on the non-infrastructure initiatives, education evaluation, encouragement pieces, and at the city council we'll be focusing primarily on the infrastructure and the enforcement portions that are more, most applicable to each body. So that will be what we'll be covering and I see some of you looking through your binders, so I'm glad to see you got your, that small, easy reading document. I would love to go through all 470 pages, but unfortunately I think that other discussion took a little longer than we expected, so. Any questions?
Jeremy, how did all of this start? Like, where did it, like, whose idea was like, hey, we got to fix this?
I keep asking myself that question.
How did you get yourself into this?
Especially this month. This started with a conversation that Brown County Planning Commission approached us at the district and said, you know, every, every year we, they're soliciting proposals, you know, they give, they give that money away, they award that money and they were short on proposals and they thought it would be great if Green Bay Public Schools might be interested in doing that. And Vicky Byer, former CFO Andrews Arno, and Kim Shanick with Community Partnerships, all of us got together and discussed it. And we thought this would be great for our kids to focus on keeping them healthy and finding safe ways to get them to school.
And what, how long ago was that?
That was about, almost three years ago, I believe.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's been a, it's been a good process.
Other questions? Brenda?
So I forgot, will we, will we be voting on this on the 17th?
I'll be making a motion to have you accept the plan.
Accept it, yeah, okay.
Contingent upon funding and all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, okay, and is that the other places you're going?
The Planning Commission will make a, will make a motion.
A motion and vote on accepting it.
And City Council as well to accept the plan as presented, yes.
Okay, I, it's.
Sorry.
Rhonda, go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, so for this to happen, right, to be rolled out, the city has to accept it, the school district has to accept it. Let's say we both accept it, then what is after that?
That will, then, once both bodies accept the plan, it will be officially accepted. We'll have our, obviously we'll have a press release and then we'll move into that implementation phase, next steps. Initially, the talk is to have a governing body that is made up of multiple entities that represent both the city and the school district and include community input like Wello, for example, to guide future initiatives with an annual update to the board and to the city council on the progress we've made and, you know, what initiatives have been ticked off that list of recommendations.
So that group would determine priority as well?
That group would not determine priority, but that group would be a body that would kind of serve as a liaison between the city and the, and the school district and keep that great partnership that we've developed open and alive, so that we would not be going, going it alone on future projects. And the real purpose, one of the main purposes of this plan is to give us a solid foundation to secure grant funding for the future and that's, you know, hopefully what we can achieve through that focus, that work group, I guess, almost like a steering committee.
Brenda?
So who will set the priority for, because there's tons of projects in here, who will be the body that decides what comes first, what gets done first?
Well, I think the plan has priorities in it already, so that, that will be one of the motions you'll be moving toward. And I think annually, a lot of these projects, the concept of this plan really focuses a lot on doing projects that already coincide with the work that each body is doing. So as we put in facilities at schools or around schools or as the city puts in infrastructure and re-does roads, this plan would be something that they would look at and say, here are the recommendations that we could kind of tick off the list that would be best. And so a lot of that is going to be worked into existing projects, but, you know, there could be, you know, if either body, the city council or Plan Commission or the school board were to have suggestions toward that steering committee, then obviously we would all work on that together, I would say.
So these, I just found one of your priorities, so these weighted scores are going to be what guide the choices for first project, second project?
Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically, yeah. Well, one of them's on 82, I looked in the table of contents and there's.
Yes, that's what I was looking for, actually, thank you.
Bicycle one has implementation timeframes, sidewalk has implementation timeframes.
Yes.
Other questions? Laura?
I was included in some of your meetings, which I really enjoyed and I learned a lot about the city I live in. And I just know, looking at this, that this represents years of effort on your part individually and as a collective group, but I know that you worked very, very hard on this and I just want to thank you for your commitment to this process.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? So then we will be voting on, we'll have motions presented related to this for the 17th?
That's correct. All right.
Okay, next, any, any, any public comment on that? Okay, then next up we have the CISA 7, 2019, 2020 contract. Do you have information to present? Okay, are there any questions about the CISA contract?
Yeah.
Rhonda?
Can you refresh our memory or, I guess, state again, are, because it said that there's still video production happening, are we getting new equipment that CISA's going to use to record or how is this working? Because we, a couple of us were just discussing this, we don't really remember the facts on that.
The estimate that's in the proposal for the $15,000, that is for the cost of the closed captioning and putting the graphics on the raw video. So that is, that is the estimate, the cost will be totally dependent on how many board meetings you have and how long your board meetings are.
But there was discussion about us getting new equipment as well?
Yep, that's coming in next week.
Okay, and so they're still providing the service for us, though?
So they're, they won't be doing, so what, the service they're providing is they're providing final production, so that's meaning taking the raw video that we'll be recording here on our own and putting the graphics on it, so that's adding your pictures, that's adding the closed captioning, those kinds of things. That's all they're doing and then uploading it to the YouTube channel for us.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I just noticed this disclaimer, if a meeting exceeds five hours, the captioning will be done, will be completed as soon as possible. Our goal is to get these under five hours, okay? There it is.
Okay, any other questions on CISA? Any public comment on CISA? All right, we will move that forward, procurement and purchasing policy, 672 with rule and exhibit, any presentation?
You have the information in front of you, it's really being brought to you because of a change in the federal grant guidance and increasing those amounts, which will make it easier on our end in securing those bids, because right now we're finding that contractors are, they know that we need to get the bids and they're declining to bid because they are realizing we're just needing to get the bids in order to make a purchase. So this, this will help us in securing those bids.
Okay, questions? All right, and, all right, public comments? Okay, human resources, then first item, Pravea Partnered Health Offering.
Pleased to tell you that we are partnering with Pravea to offer something that Pravea's entitled, Pravea Partnered Health, and it will allow us to offer a lower cost service to our employees and their families who are on an insurance plan. So for a charge for the district of $75 per visit, Pravea would offer their primary care, urgent care settings, physical therapy, a $10 copay to our employees and their families, and immunizations. And I attached to the memo the list of the different offerings that Pravea would provide at no cost to the employee and $75 per visit for the, to the district. Again, I think that this would be an enhancement to our plan, this would not run through insurance and we would be direct billed for the services. Pravea's offering this to other organizations that have a relationship with Pravea and we do because we work with them through our health and wellness clinic downstairs. The next step would be if the board would approve this on the 17th, we would be entering into a contract with Pravea and then working with them to start the service probably sometime in later summer, late July summer or August. And any, do you have any questions now, anything that?
Questions? Okay, thank you. Any, any public comment on that one? All right, then we have the Avid Coordinator and District Alternative Placement Tutor Coordinator Job Description. Questions on that? Michelle?
Vicky, I'm not sure where she stepped out, but this particular position currently exists, the coordinator position exists. What this does is extend the coordinator's responsibilities, really starts to look at, I think you just joined us, the importance of, as students are given alternative kinds of learning experiences, potentially following an expulsion or what have you, and if they're going to receive services not in one of our educational settings, but outside of our settings, that would be one of the responsibilities. I think that's one of the biggest pieces and maybe, Vicky, you could describe that the District Alternative Placement Tutor Coordinator is that second part of this addition to the job.
It's attached to the Avid position, her original job description isn't appropriate at all. She's been underpaid for the work that she's been doing for many, many years and we're trying to correct that and do the right thing. The second piece is exactly what Dr. Langenfeld just mentioned, the number of students right now receiving one-to-one tutoring off-campus is about 32 and that's beyond the capacity for our teachers right now. So Paulette, if the board approves, we will move her into that position where she can provide the support that they would need.
Questions?
Just a comment, it was great to see all these kids coming through graduation with their Avid medals.
Thank you.
That was impressive.
Other, other questions? Okay, public comment? Okay, we'll move that forward. We have the After School Site Director Coordinator Job Description.
This request is part of the after-school programming. It was brought to our attention and was very much a part of the monitoring reports we received from the Department of Public Instruction that said we needed this position, so Andrea and Lisa are here to talk about it.
Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight about this position. This is Lisa Johnson, she's the Coordinator of After School Programming and Summer School.
Yep, so this position, it was, is very much needed, it's really to provide coaching and mentoring to our after-school site directors to really help them focus on curriculum planning, the development of engaging project-based learning throughout. And it's something that we recognize that there's a need to be able to spend more time with our, with our after-school folks.
We also discussed that the position really is to support the work that is being done in the schools. In addition to that, it is grant-funded, so it's coming out of the 21 CCLC fund. Each one of the 13 sites that have the funding, we would be taking some of the grant money to pull it together to create this one position that would support all of the sites.
Christina?
I just want to say that I just really, I liked the job description and how you set this up and I like that it's, you know, oftentimes when you see coordinator positions, it's a very low-level, low-paying job and these folks are being asked to do a heavy lift and their expertise needs to be honored and I just appreciate that you've elevated this job because it needs to be and I think it will serve our kids well, so I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa's been advocating for a year now for the position. Has really done a great job of doing an analysis of where the needs are and really supported the writing of the job description, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, and then the questions will probably overlap, so we can just probably take the, for the work session purpose, just take the four IT job descriptions, any questions on those? Michelle?
Just make a comment. This, as I mentioned in the beginning of our discussion tonight with the COO position, we are not replacing the Chief Information Technology Officer, Diane Dersh, and her retirement, but what we are doing is reallocating the work. So in other words, we are, we're going to be sure, we're losing a position to flatten the organization, but we have to do some adjusting to address the workload, so that, while, while we were trying to do that. So that's what these positions actually represent. So for example, Josh Pachek, who is here, is currently the Director of Technology. He will become the Executive Director and the Director of Technology position will be removed from the table of organization and he will receive, because of increased responsibility, some increase in salary. But it's important to recognize that we, and we'll bring that back, the cost savings when, with Diane not being replaced at this time. The Instructional Technology Coordinator takes on a little bit more responsibility. He currently is in a position right now, so it's a little bit, I think it's, I can't recall, Jean, I don't know, it's a minimal pay change, but, but it is some. And then the Computer Maintenance Supervisor, again, the same kind of shift in, in responsibilities, some additional, but it's part of the reorganization as we move forward to absorb the work that still has to be done as we try to address a more flat organization.
I guess all, all these have incumbents in the positions and it's just internal transfers and internal promotions, it's not creating a new position?
And it's not creating a new position and it is, and the reason, the reason of the further change is to very carefully try to address the workload that currently is existing with one less person, is really what it is. There will be one fewer position in that and it will be the top position that will no longer be there. There will be one fewer position in that, and it will be the top position that will no longer be there.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move those forward, and then future agenda setting. Do you want to have any items related to that?
Yes, sorry. I was staring at my screen. So I had asked in our April meeting to talk about recess. I thought that it was coming forward in the June meeting. I tried to find the discussion on the video, but I think that was like a five-hour meeting, and I stopped searching at some point to like find it, because I wasn't going to re-watch the whole thing. So I don't, Brenda, you had said you thought we had planned to put it in a retreat, but now the retreat is in July. Andrew, you made some comments about retreats not including actionable items. So my question for us is, if we want to bring this forward so that we can prepare for nineteen-twenty, what would the board like to do, and where would it fit into our agenda? And Andrew, I know you had some comments about that, too.
Yes, my, my thought was, although, although it was partially, there's no legal reason that we couldn't have an action item in a retreat. It's kind of, or we could have it, we could discuss it in the retreat, I suppose, and then still have it as a voting item under the, posted for, wait, when are the July meetings, though? Are they? They're both after the retreat?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, I guess, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if we, how did, did we, did we talk about this in the, in last month's agenda setting meeting and decided to put it on the retreat? Or did we just, just missed this one?
I recall deciding it was, would be part of the whole strategic framework discussion as, as part of the wellness part of that strategic framework discussion, and then we would decide what things we would want to pull out of that for potential policy changes or action items. Is that, I don't know if anybody else remembers.
So then if we had the retreat and discussed it on the eleventh, it could be put on the?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth.
So we would have it in the retreat. It would be a natural topic in the retreat, but we also would put a proposal in the, for discussion action in the July meeting cycle, then?
Fifteenth, right.
Yeah.
And then vote on it July six.
Twenty-second.
Would it be helpful for me to draft some language around what I am thinking in terms of recess, to bring it on the eleventh, so that we could, Sheridan and I could certainly work with Melissa on that. I'm just, I just want to ensure that we're, I'm prepared on the eleventh with whatever we need to do so we can move forward and however that looks.
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe with John, who's...
Yeah, we had done, we had done some preliminary work, and I'm trying to figure out where things are at. I'm sitting here, because we had pulled some research, done some polling of schools to understand what they were currently doing with recess, I remember at the time.
Do you want to just connect after this meeting, Michelle, to talk about what we need to do to prepare for that eleventh, July eleventh meeting, John?
Yeah, are we thinking, are we thinking policy rate?
Yeah, and it would be conversation at the retreat, but Christina's point is just, you know, prepare so that it doesn't take another...
And we might need to...
Okay, we can just set up a meeting, and then we can determine what we want to do.
And then it potentially would be on our, for, at our work session on the fifteenth as a, as a discussion item, and then a vote.
And vote on the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second.
Okay.
So you're right, if you come, July.
If I come prepared.
So if you, so if you, John, Melissa, you know, come with some example for us to react to, then that speeds the process along.
Okay. We can do that. I'll, I'll connect with you all. Thank you.
Rhonda?
So that takes care of recess, but, so I just want to be clear on this agenda setting. We have a discussion at the table about what we'd like to see. Where does the discussion go? Does someone take notes on it? And determine that it will be on an agenda? You know, because it's, it's not clear to me how that's working. Because I also think it would have helped this situation as well. So there's some new thing we're doing where we discuss what we'd like to see on an agenda, and we make a determination that we'd like to see it or we don't. And then what happens with that discussion? Is, you know, are you, one of you taking notes on that?
Well, I think, I think Sandy's recording the, the meeting, and I think the, I think we've just, I, I'm, I don't, firstly, I don't want to set a precedent of voting to have things on the agenda, because then it suggests that a majority is required to even discuss an item, and I don't think anyone really intends that. So I think this is an additional opportunity. Board members still have the right to put something on the, on the agenda. This is just a, maybe a streamlined way to, to get, to get something out there that was maybe overlooked like this. The recess thing may have been on just a retreat, and so...
But I guess my question is, then, are you taking what she's writing down into your weekly meeting when you're developing an agenda?
Well, if we decide at this meeting that we want something on an agenda, then Sandy puts it on the agenda, and it come, you know, and then it's up to the district administrators to determine, you know, and I, I mean, but I think also the question becomes, it's not, it's, it's often timing. You know, we, we need to have a conversation about what makes sense in terms of timing and preparation, and what else is on their plate, and, and that's the intent of this discussion, is to say, you know, otherwise, I get the requests and I make a decision, and then the board hasn't had a chance to weigh in, you know, and then, and then, you know, it, it gets put on the agenda, but not immediately, and there are reasons why that happened, but the rest of the board doesn't know. So this is a chance for us to say...
Sounds like the same thing we were doing, though. I guess I'm, I'm not understanding how it's different.
It, it's just ensuring that we will, every meeting will have this as a placeholder so we're posted to talk about future agenda items. So if anything was, so now there's, there's no chance, there, there's no chance that this cannot be held on the July, I, I think it's very clearly now that this has been designated for the July cycle. There's no, there's no, there might be something else that comes up on short notice or a request that Brenda and I talked about, and I, I think we can, you know, additional things could be added on short notice, but this, this locks it in. So it's, there's a consensus to do this on the fifteenth. It's, it's done already.
But, okay, still. So there was another, there were other agenda items discussed at that time as well. So where are those right now?
Well, they were discussed about, we would have talked, at the last one of those, we would have talked about things for this agenda, some of which were in, and what was going to be on the close session.
Okay, so, but I had brought up the dress code again, and I just, are you going to be reporting back to us that we might be discussing this? There just seem, you know, I know when I want to actually discuss something, I'd like to know where it's going, and, and will I get a report back that yes, you'll see it? No, you won't? There's still more discussion that needs to be had. I guess, where is it?
The dress code piece was actually discussed at the most recent Intercity Student Council meeting, and at that time, the students were going to be reporting back to, I think it was Judy Wiegand and a couple of other people that she had, was meeting with.
That's what we talked about at our agenda setting meeting, was that we would be taking, you know, that we were waiting for students to give us...
There's still plenty of doing that part.
Okay, and that's, but if I hadn't asked about it, I wouldn't know. So I'm the one that discussed it, so I guess my question is, if we're going to bring up agenda items in, in an open session and take time to do this, who's reporting back to the people who are initially...
To let them know when it's going to happen.
To let them know what needs to still happen, who it needs to go through. I guess, you take time to discuss it, and then you just hope it appears somewhere.
Well, your point is important, because even for me, I got, whether I was confused or remembered incorrectly, I thought it was coming forward tonight, and then I was like, wait a second, what's happening? So I think your, your point, at least what I'm hearing, is how do we circle back with the person who brought it up to let them know where it's going to show up?
I, I, let me just make this, like, super easy. I would love it if board leadership would actually give us a report on when that may or may not happen and why, and what needs to still happen. That would be great.
That's what we did last time with the dress code.
But I haven't had any, I haven't had any report back on...
Yeah, that's fair. Okay, so we are, on the dress code, we are waiting for a report from ICSC.
Right.
And, Michelle?
I, I can just give you an update.
But just send an email.
But send an email.
Yeah, just an update. I know that there, there was discussion of the importance of getting feedback from all stakeholders, and that we may not be able to get to the teachers because of the lateness of the, of the timing. But the recommendation and the recognition that dress code has not been addressed, and you know this, the policy since two thousand and eight. So what we are putting into the expectation handbook, if we don't get it done by then, if the, if the board is not at, at that place yet, is that we will notify, it makes it, it, there will be a notation in the handbook that says it is under revision, under review, and that as soon as that information comes forward, it would go out and go into practice or policy. The, the piece around it is just being able, the capacity to get to the students and the staff and making sure, because I, I think there's a lot of, as we started talking through and talking about it, there's a lot of nuances with that, so there needs to be quite a bit more discussion. But I think that, you know, if we, if we can get it done, I know Judy isn't here right now, so I'm not sure where she's at in the process, but it is underway. And it is, the handbook says that we will notify the community and everyone involved if we don't get it, when it, because it'll change the current policy. Does that make...
Yeah, so we, I think, we have, we have that commitment that some handbook, so that we don't get tri, so we don't trip, get trip over the whoops, we would have been ready on September eighteenth, except the binding language that the, of the handbook can't be changed, so we're going to adjust the handbook to make sure.
And it's one of the few items in the handbook that hasn't been changed. Most things are pretty current policy-wise.
But yeah, that's a good point. I'll work on making sure that I cycle back with, with the agenda item requests.
Because it, it eliminates me from asking it again, or sending texts, or, then I just kind of have not, and people are asking, and I don't have answers, that I, you know, just, thanks.
So, okay, go ahead, Christina.
Melissa, is there, are there any legal ramifications for Brenda and Andrew to send out an email to the board with general updates about board business if no one responds? Like if they were to send, if Brenda was to send an email to the, if they were to send an email, weekly email, I'm just throwing this idea out there, ju, just trying to increase communication of like what everyone's doing. Say Brenda says, okay, every Monday, I'm going to send an email to the board, and I'm going to just do a quick, high level of here are just some updates. We're doing a superintendent RFP. We have this going on, this, this, and this. Contact Sandy if you, I don't know what the next step would be, like do this if you have questions. Are there any issues with that?
Yes and no. So if it's discussing something that you have discussed at your meetings, then that is probably violating open meetings. If it's...
But what if it was just an update? Like you're not discussing, you're not getting into the details, but if you're just like, hey, we talked about this, sorry to interrupt you, but like literally this conversation, like remember at the board meeting last week, Rhonda said this, it's going to be on this agenda topic at this date. That would be an example.
I would have concerns about open meetings.
Even if, even if it's strictly to talk about agenda, about, about topics?
If it's about something you have not discussed, and you are sending out, here's the board agenda for, here's the map for the next month's board agenda, of course, it's always subject to open records. It would definitely be something that would get released under open records, which I'm...
Well, sure.
Not an issue with that. But I have concerns about discussing things in an email that you've already discussed at the board table.
We wouldn't be discussing, it would be information sharing normally.
But Brenda is discussing, and it's information sharing.
So how do we then increase communications with the board in a more timely fashion? Because what's frustrating to me is that we never can talk to, we, I mean, things move quickly, and people are working on stuff, and it's really hard to know where your work fits in and, and how to support other people's work if you don't ever know what's going on.
You're a governing body, and you are governed by open meetings laws, and, and that is going to, to determine that level of communication.
So you're saying it's a problem if the email goes to all of us?
I'm saying there's not just all of you. I'm saying the problem is, is that, so...
What if Sandy sent it?
Ten to ten, so I'm having problems.
I know.
I've, I've way been past my bedtime, I know.
What if it comes from Sandy?
What if it comes from Sandy?
Sandy and Michelle give the board an update on where things have been? That's not a problem.
Like what if...
So that can come in our update?
It can come in your green letter update.
Yeah, which we only get, you know, twice a month. I'm wondering if we just, I think we just have a routine, starting a document so that when we get to this topic, and there are things that we haven't covered yet, we can, we can make sure we bring them back for an update.
I don't know what that means. Starting a document where?
No, I'm just for my own, for myself.
Oh, okay.
To remember what to bring, what to cycle back through when we're here as a board.
Let me look at, just let me look into this, because I, I just want to make sure I'm giving you the most accurate answer.
No, and I know it's late, and I'm tired, too. I'm just, we're here, we're literally talking.
That's exactly what I was actually asking, is if, was there something that you were taking notes on when we talked about future agenda items? And I just wondered if...
Yeah, well, you know, we, we said it for, that we would, we were going to have a conversation at Intercity Student Council, and that's...
Right.
And at that meeting, sent it back, but obviously, not everybody was at that meeting, so... The communication falls through at that point. So, so I think just continuing to...
Would it be helpful if people have agenda items that they've raised, and you haven't had the feedback, just get those to Brenda so that she knows what is still out there, what hasn't been addressed?
Okay.
And then you can weigh in on, we used to, we used to have a weekly update.
From who?
I'm not looking, what's that?
From who?
When Dan was here.
Who sent it?
Sandy read, Sandy did. But I'm not looking to put a major thing on anyone.
And we don't also have to decide now. I'm just, I'm just...
But just, there, yeah, there needs to be a...
We need to figure out a way to, especially because with the superintendent search, there's going to be a lot of things happening. And as much as we can keep people in the know with staying in accordance with open meeting laws, I think we should explore that and just give it some thought over the next month as we plan for nineteen-twenty. And that's all I'll say about that.
But in the meantime, if you have agenda items that haven't been put on agendas, let Brenda know.
Would, would she be able to do an update and then just hand it out at the board table?
It has to be talk...
At, at your meeting, could she hand it out at the board table?
Right.
Sure.
But it would be, it would be an attachment. I mean, that would be no different than sending an email.
And you'd attach it to Neptune?
It would be attached to Neptune.
Sure.
Right. I mean, we could do that.
You'd have to probably put it as an agenda item.
It would have to be an agenda item, yeah.
But like an, like an agenda follow-up, this is where things are.
Bringing me back to what I, what I just said.
There's other things that could probably done that we, you could, you could probably have track agenda requests on a, on a Google sheet if, if there was public access, if there's public access.
That's conducting...
I, that makes me really nervous.
I thought, I thought I read something specifically that said you can do that.
Can this just be covered under this?
I think if you do an attachment to this agenda item, yeah, you definitely can do that.
Just cover it under here.
I just want to also just say one other thing, though. In, in the interim, that's what I'm talking about, too, though, is how do we, when we're going two weeks and there is something else coming up, what are some other ways that we can communicate with one another? So, again, don't have to decide that now. I just like to know what's going on. What?
We can't.
You can't, yeah.
We can't. Well, yes, I know that...
It's very frustrating, and I remember feeling the same way when I was new. Why can't we just talk to each other? And it just, it's the rules we're governed by, and it's very frustrating.
Well, we did actually just say that Sandy and Michelle could send out a weekly email to the board with updates, so that is, that seems to be a, a solution if there are timely, time-sensitive updates.
And I'm not looking...
I already get a lot of stuff from Sandy and Michelle.
Oh, I don't get any, yeah, I don't...
If you're talking specifically about agendas, I mean, I think this agenda item is helpful, and to put it in attachment there.
I'm not talking about agenda items, I'm talking about the work, just updates of what is happening in the district that will help to inform what I'm doing. Because then I have a sense of what you're working on and what the priorities are that week. A good example is the tran, or the, the budget hearing, right? If, if that, I, I know that came... So, part of it is, yes, my personal responsibility. I, I just think, though, that it would be helpful if everybody had a better sense of what everyone was doing.
I wonder if this is something Andrew Holwick can help us with?
Maybe.
If he's had other districts who struggle with communication?
That's a good idea.
And how do we, he's got a creative way?
Maybe.
Yeah. But thank you for commiserating with me.
It's very frustrating to not just be able to get together and talk about stuff, but there's just no way to do it. You know, it's just not possible.
Okay, anything, anything else? Okay, that concludes the organizational support.
Do you need to, we do have the option to go back in a closed session, but you need to go.
I got it. I texted my babysitter. I'm good.
Okay, so, we're going to closed session?
Ten minutes. Ten, we can do it quickly, I think, right?
Okay. So, I entertain that motion.
Can you leave it?
Somebody can find it, you gotta read it.
How does the board reconvene in closed session in room three thirty-seven pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-point-eight-five, Pren. One, Pren. E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required to close session, more specifically to wit after-school programming contracts pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-point-eight-five, Pren. One, Pren. G. Conferring with a legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, to wit potential litigation matter in pursuit of Wisconsin Statute nineteen-point-eight-five, Pren. One, Pren. C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. In pursuit to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-point-eight-five, Pren. One, Pren. F. Considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary considerations of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where a par, Pren. B, applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations. To wit, emeritus break in service, staff investigations, and safety and well-being of staff. The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session.
Yep, right. Is there a second? All right, second.
Sandy?
Ecker?
Aye.
McQuaid?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Van Nieuwen?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Sit in the house?
Upstane.
Carrie, seven-zero.
You two get those smiles off your faces.
Okay, bye-bye. Thank you, Sandy.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine-two-zero-four-four-eight-two-zero-two-five, or by email at communications@gbaps.org.